I was saying that, as I spoke with, I tried to say, Mr. Wade, he's my, I had a priority. I said, "I know you're going to have something, so I'm just going to send one." And she said, "You all need to get together and give me a list." And so, I know that all of you all know what areas in your ward need to be addressed. I talked to Mr. Hendrick at Public Works, and he said, "This is going to need to be bided out. It's going to be along with this, uh, this way." That this would have to be bided out because of the amount of money we were looking to send and then maybe to get in touch with Mr. Hawke. And so, I asked Mr. President if it was okay, and I asked him to come in because I was informed that you know about all the cave-ins, that you're aware of.
I don't know about all of them, but, um, Public Works, they should have a record of them as well, that people have called in. But the individual council people, y'all know your wards better than anybody, and you know where they're... I know you know your...
And then, I was, I was hoping that we could get our priorities, and if you could help facilitate any priorities, give the bids versus, uh, some of the, for, um, Mr. President getting permission to reach out.
Yeah, that's what I, that'd be the best way to handle it. Y'all give me your priorities, and I'll ride out there individually with each other and look at them. And then I'll compile what, in my opinion, are the worst ones and what the solutions are to fix. And that's the best I can do.
And I remember you giving us a map. Remember you gave us a map one time, that when we first came in, it was the first year I came in? And we would have, we were asking about fixing cave-ins and stuff, areas of where the city, where you had been bid contracts, trying to follow up.
And that was probably when we applied for a grant.
Mm-hmm.
That we got, we got one in 2016, and then we got another one working on life that was approved late last year, early, early this year, another grant. It was approved as well, a $450,000 grant. And it's got some work in your ward, Councilman Jackson's, Councilman Short, Councilman Benjamin, I think that's right, I'm not sure. I may have some in the same, I'm not sure. Uh, we picked about six or seven areas to fix drainage problems, and a lot of those drainage problems are half cave-in.
Yeah.
You got a follow-up?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you, I wanted to let everybody know. I appreciate what you've done, uh, for my area. Uh, we had a, we had a major project that had been going on for a month. And, uh, he came right in, uh, another gentleman from another area. He had said it had been going on a whole month, and, uh, but nobody had ever contacted Ray. But Ray came right in, and we had to climb up on the track and stuff, but he found a way to get there, and he took care of that issue. And the people in the community appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Mr. Hawke, did you get a chance to ride over to the Monty and the Cave-In area?
Um, the Monty, we were at the cave-in at the river's line, um, that particular day, and I think you were gonna head over that day or the next day. Um, you're married, married?
You're married. I thought we were headed over right then, you're correct, we started one down. And I know I did not.
Did you get a check? Okay, 'cause when you do, I want to go over with you.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause I have, um, something I need to show you in the, um, St. Phillips MLK area as well, so if you have a little riding day, and you really go over to the Monty and the Cave-In and cross on over, to show you that as well. With the $450,000 grant, uh, you talked about, um, the video that I sent you for the area...
That's gonna be a part of that grant.
Okay, okay.
The drainage, uh, is a lot...
It's, it's a lot of given, uh-huh, and you may have gone down, you may have gone down church, but it's, uh, it might have been.
Right there with that concrete, uh, ditch, process, and then you got a backup, yeah, that's included in that.
Okay.
Anyone else? You want to, uh, Councilman, you want to?
Um, Mr. Hawke, I was wanting to inquire about Wilkins Road and Oak Street. Um, Oak Street has...
Where you talking? I saw a big lady about two weeks ago, and he reminded me of it. And I said, "Tell Susan, we've asked somebody to go look at it." And I'm gonna be honest, Mayor did that, you know, we worked together, which is also a loss. I don't remember what.
Okay. Also, on Wilkins Road, there's, and that's been going on for years and years and years. Pardon?
That one, Wilkins Road, is around the town. That we're into talking about.
Well, there are two, there are two areas. There's a place that I didn't even know about, was an issue, that has started doing like a bit on Oak Street, but actually, there's a place when you turn the corner, um, okay, you know where the Hollies live, when you're going down Wilkins? And in front of their house, there's a place that I didn't even know was an issue, but I got a call about it, started doing like a cave-in, and somebody came to put one of those orange barrels there. But when you turn the corner, there is, you can tell where they did something once before. Probably put a bunch of cement and asphalt in, like they did Oak Street once before, and just made it sink more. But there's a sinkhole that's sinking a bit more, and so, okay, if you would...
I think there's also one, Salma Avenue. That'd be, you know, they gotta do is a barrel sit.
Right there.
Right, that's right, that's where the gas companies did a lot of repairs in there, so I don't know, I, I'm gonna take a look at that.
And one, one more thing, a second thing, and this really doesn't have, well, I think it kind of, like it does, Mr. Hawke says I'm an engineer, and I think it's also the waterworks, don't you do waterwork stuff, too? Can anybody tell us where we are? I wish Mr. Johnson were here. And actually, this is Mr. Thomas's thing, about the waterworks, about they do work, when they do projects, when they go in and fix things, and about how it's supposed to be finished up, 'cause that's been kind of an issue with them. But anyway, I'm sorry.
We gotta ask.
That's not mine, that's Mr....
No, 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 you have a right to come and deal with all our street. Everybody sit up here, you know, uh, our, our streets get poor. And, uh, President Boe was with me, and, uh, and we, we, we'll tell you exactly.
Okay. Well, y'all might be able to remember that. Thanks.
Councilman Boe.
Westaven? Y'all been out there looking for Westaven yet? Do you guess the city has any emails that the council people sent about cave-in?
I don't recall that they have, but I'm likely to tell a lie.
Hey, you mind, it's, it's right there in Westaven, you know, it's where several families sued the city once before for gray water in the rain system.
Exactly. Now, we, we fixed one area.
Yeah, you did that one before, and that's the one that goes next to, uh, Mr. Huetsey's and Mr. Todd's house, right in that area. It's the same street, but, uh, there's a hole that's small, but the cavity inside is becoming increasingly larger, just about.
I'm honestly going to drive down and look at some of this wall.
Yes, sir, and, and I, I recommended and asked again if it's not a gray water situation, which it could be, and they've used A-DIM before to get the city to react, uh, so we don't want to find ourselves in that situation anyway. But if there's any way we could, you know, if I gotta get some crusher run down that hole, or something in that hole, just to give us some time to kind of get it packed up so it's, you know, stabilized a little bit, uh, let me know. That's all I've asked the city to do, is just let me know what we gotta do to put a Band-Aid over it so we can get to a, you know, bigger concern, a solution that works for the money that has to spend.
I guess.
Thank you, Ray.
I just want to ask, will you give us a deadline? Hopefully, when we come in on the night, that we could go to go with those priorities, 'cause there's ways that we have to develop the list, come back with the priorities, or we establish the priorities and decide what we're gonna, uh, fix first. So hopefully, on the night, since we approved the money last time, putting you in place to develop, and hopefully by the next meeting, we're, they have all that done, so can you give us a date to say, "Hey, I have all this in, but such, such date," or arrive with everybody? Are you gonna call us? What do you want to, how do you want to?
Well, if y'all can give me a list by the end of this week, next week is a short period, because I'm starting to question five. But when y'all meet again?
The ninth. Happy birthday.
July ninth. Happy birthday, and thanks. That would be on the, two weeks from tomorrow. I might have, I might could have you something out.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Might be.
I, I, and y'all will probably have a work session that Monday night before, since before this next week. Y'all give me something by the end of this week, just calling, uh, every morning y'all has my phone number, I'm pretty sure I know, I'll see.
This, uh, I'm, I'm talking about old money now. Uh, Old Bim was part of that project, uh, at four hundred something, I don't know. And, uh, I know the money part running out now, but, uh, people in Bim was still having sewage problem.
Bim, or what about this?
Uh, from, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-one hundred block to, uh, two thousand, about to twenty-one hundred block. You know, the sewage right behind the house, part of the, was supposed to move sewage out to the front, uh, somehow, somebody must have...
That's still on my list.
Somebody, uh, and, uh, so we still got some money in that account?
Yeah, I think we got, uh, over, well over a million dollars paid.
Yeah. Yeah. 'Cause, uh, 'cause I, I'm just concerned, because I know that, uh, Bim was on that business.
That's, you know, that's tough, 'cause that mine goes behind those houses, you have little storage sheds, and there's trees like that big around, like on top of it. And that's, that's been, was that a development right after?
Yeah.
All right, we got a question? Thank you. I like that. Senator Jones?
There you go.
Leave the heat.
Leave the heat. Um, a couple things. One thing, I just mentioned to President Bowie, Judge Nunn called me today. The county owns a building where the Dallas County Board of Education meets. It's by WHBB, y'all know who that is, on Lauderdale? All right, there's some trees that have some limb issues, and he's offering to cut them, for the county to come, cut them. Denmark's gonna do it for like five or six thousand dollars, if the city will just allow them to do it. And I said, "Y'all probably would."
Sure.
Uh, but I said, "I couldn't promise anything."
Yeah.
But I'll probably, yeah, I'll, what he and I suggested is just like a permit, a license, where the city allows him to get on, or the county can go on that right away and cut it, and indemnify the city if somebody falls and gets hurt.
I think, yeah, we probably ought to see if anybody out here have heard, heard about the set-in that, which, yeah, I have heard.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, somebody was in the session. Who, who wants to do it?
The county.
County, that we see?
Yes.
That's right, too.
Yes.
The county also do, and send us a bill of war?
No, they're, they're gonna pay for it.
They're gonna pay yours, and they all have a bill of war.
Yeah. I think the tree...
They're gonna pay the five thousand dollars, you're talking?
Yeah, whatever it costs, uh, makes a type of list.
Okay, I was distracted, and you knew the first part, I got you.
So I'll draft, license, permit, and send it to, uh, you tomorrow. Of course. Um, I think Mr. Buster was here, I guess, a week or two ago, about the cemetery preservation. So I've drafted, uh, a, uh, what we'll call a license for them to enter the cemeteries, for y'all to approve. I've sent it to President Bowie, uh, where they were allowed to come and fix these markers and do certain things. I've got on here, just 'cause it's a cemetery, they've gotta have a million dollar liability policy, they'll indemnify the city if anybody sued the city because they messed up somebody's marker, so that's gonna be in front of y'all tomorrow to vote on as well. Questions?
Did he, uh, did he give you the permit that he was talking about for the signage?
I think he did send me that yesterday, uh, so I can send that to y'all, too.
Yeah, 'cause I want to see it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Why weren't we subject, and this is what I want to ask about, going back to the trees, why weren't we subject to trees? Trees around here have just been, been cut down like crazy. We are a tree city, and we have a tree commission, and I don't recollect anybody having come to the council, or a tree commission having met about cutting down the trees. Councilwoman Thomas, I believe that does come under the purview of buildings and cemetery park, cemeteries and that stuff, is that correct?
Yeah.
Do you, have you heard anything about that? Because there have been some trees that have been cut down that, and now, I'm not a tree doctor, but just kind of have the appearance of them healthy. And I just want to make it put that out there, we might need to have a little more discussion about that, and get the tree commission meeting, and get, look at the roads and all that, because when we just get our trees cut down, we need, that is a big part of our allure and appeal itself here. So I, I just want to put that out there, perhaps we should get together, get community development, and whatever.
I was trying to, uh, find out what's...
Do you have a copy of the committees?
No.
Okay. You probably need to get a copy.
What's about the public?
Yes, it is, it's, it's an appointed committee, and I don't think it's been active in a long time, but we certainly need to get it active.
Can you ask for a copy of all the committees?
Yeah.
I, I do remember, I do recall that, you know, when we first, back in like 2000, I Councilwoman Benjamin, you were called, and there used to be some procedures that people had to go through before they, trees got cut down, you know, and we did, and, and there still are, but it's just not being followed, and when they start just, we chopping down trees, going to have acid, and that's, that's just not good. So I think that we just need to get a little...
Um, I had about an hour phone call today with Yolanda, with First Avenue, and their attorney about injunctions we're talking about a couple weeks ago, so we're, um, still looking into the best way to do that. Some of the folks on that list are paying monthly. We think some of them actually may be remitting to the state, I don't know, the state was involved in some sales tax, so we're looking to see if that's gonna back us, too. Um, and then, uh, so we're, we're pursuing that, and that'll come before y'all at some point, uh, and I'm kind of being vague about that, but we talked about that last one, too. That's kind of it in a nutshell, I'm sure y'all have questions.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question for the art camp you're talking about.
Yeah, so what we're gonna do, the same thing we do from the snow, is just in the contract agreement for everybody that's working on our camp, that way it'll just be easier, they can just submit a bill, like an invoice to the city.
And last question, uh, you said, I asked you about the inventory, uh, service proposal, you said you're gonna get, and I had to...
Yeah, I didn't get thrown out, yeah, about the business.
Big process, so, thank you, sir. Councilwoman Short, then Councilwoman Thomas.
Your attorney, yeah, uh, uh, I have opposed this, uh, this fund that this lady has made available to council, five thousand dollars a piece, with mayor's five thousand, fifty thousand, uh, about bringing back thirteen of displaced workers for three months to reduce the specific woods, and then use a lot more, uh, picking up garbage, sticking to the transfer stations, and, uh, cutting grass, and use a lot of special woods. There were some little concerns that was, that was asked, I don't know if there's some that can answer that, if not, then I'm gonna move forward with this proposal. Well, we had, uh, we had, we had a consensus that we would not bother this morning until President contacted Attorney General, because the league has given us the green light, we used to, and they recommended that we hit, we leave a opinion from Attorney General. And, uh, I do know that there is a time, uh, may not be as quick as the meeting, but Mr. Bowie was gonna make me a speedy call to Attorney General to, possibly, and we'd ask so that we can move forward, in between time. I, I took a draft to Ms. Wade, twelve people, and, and Ms. Wade, we capitalized, because I had to fix a high percentage of the finished benefit, uh, we were able to get, uh, the additional person. So, uh, once again, if the little concern that my colleagues had as to what those concerns were, I don't know, but if they have been answered, then I would give you a floor, because the mayor might ask the Council to hold up the balance on the proposal, this money being used to bring back thirteen of our displaced workers with specific purpose of cutting grass, picking up.
Okay, before I go to Councilwoman, Charles. Also, two things, Mr. Short, to, uh, get around the benefits, we haven't thought about bringing back post-retired employees, and that way, uh, you don't have to worry about paying benefits and stuff like that. Post-retired employees.
You know, I really, I think the purpose of bringing back some displaced workers...
I know, I'm just saying, in the fourth, we may want to use the term, six months, part-time, part-time, up to ninety, ninety days, is right. We might get around paying that benefits also.
Well, whatever we can do, if there's some displaced worker down for that, and I, and I do know that five thousand dollars individually going through a whole life, but fifty thousand can't help a whole lot of people, you're talking about thirteen people, you're talking about thirteen families, and, and with opportunity for us to do this, I think it would be wise for us to, uh, bring some of the workers back, if not, it's just a small, little time.
Councilwoman.
Uh, I understand where you're coming from, uh, Councilwoman LeShaw, at the time when we voted for this, uh, five thousand dollars piece, I didn't, well, I'm, I was elected for Ward Seven, you were, your, your decision, when, uh, I choose my decision, when we voted, uh, to, uh, use this money to cut grass, which I had grass overgrown, and I have, have been beat down in my ward, and I, I take pride in what we do in my ward, and I have been moving forward, and I moved forward, because when residents called me from sun up to sundown, talking about the grass and the snakes and stuff, I don't wait to each council to make their decision. I was elected for, to represent Ward Seven, and when we voted for that five thousand, the, the man that cuts the grass in my ward have everything that your policy required of, and I moved forward, 'cause I have a neighborhood where grass was, there's overgrown, people calling, and I'm not, I didn't sit back and wait till you decide, when you wanted to vote, uh, each one of these council people here decide what they want to do. As an electorate figure, I chose to do what I need to do for Ward Seven, and that was to get that grass cut on City Rodeo Way, walking down the walkway, the, the, the walkway, grass is so high, people calling you, people talking, you beating the council down. This council chose to move forward with her ward to get that grass cut from some, every city, every area around in Ward Seven on City Rodeo.
Follow up on that, then, Councilwoman.
Uh, you know, I, I understand, really, sentiment, Ms. Thomas. We all have some of the problems within our ward, but I thought there was a consensus that this five thousand dollars could go into the weeds until we have food, you know, there was two pots of money.
No, but, uh, that wasn't it.
That was the first person I had for authority, there were two pots of money that we were seeing. One was all these, and I hope and pray that we could use all these, because there isn't a bogus amount of money in that fund. So the consensus that I thought we had, rather than we move forward with this five thousand, let's try to get the maximization of the bare minimum fund and our disposal, and that there would be no move on this five thousand dollars until we hear it back from you, because we have to talk with Attorney General, whether we have to talk to him or not, if we know that there is not, you know, we, we, we can answer, and then we can move forward with five thousand. So once we win, Mr. President, I'm gonna put this on the street, and I'm gonna let my colleagues go up and down, and push everyone, the focus, we can decide.
We have verified the ladies office, yeah, and I'm trying to expedite it, but there's only so much I can do to get them, to get an opinion quick.
Yeah, I was gonna say, by time, you, if, if Attorney General, if in January, February, grass cuts, he'll deal with it. But, uh, I, I, I appreciate my colleague trying to bring back, uh, thirteen people. I, I would like to see, put your mouth down for six day people, let all six day people say, you know, uh, we have those many people laid off, and, uh, unemployed, and ran out, they do their vacation time, you want to be in your vacation time, unemployed, and ran out. I, I appreciate you finding some money, you know, try to help everybody, try to help that other, uh, put, uh, forty, forty something.
Basically, it's gonna be cheaper than that, that's the majority of the, of the five other jobs. This way, could you give us a total amount, basically, of how many, I guess you have to get to HR, how many retirees, people have already retired?
I've said, I've said, I'm less than the number of the trials, but I have been unsuccessful in this one, back in HR, I've been having a bit of challenge, but I'm, I'm seeing a number of trials.
Yeah, 'cause it should be cheaper, though, the, the five to six day, a lot of them have already been getting from their employees, so.
Get some of the...
Some have retired, so. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
But I, I wasn't finished, but, uh, I know someone have retired, but we still, all these people, they vacation time, uh, you can't get around that, you cannot get around, not paying these people, they vacation time, and everybody knows the workers laid off from the field, uh, these people need their money, especially the ones that ran out, uh, unemployed. And like I said, you know, I'm not saying pay everybody all at one time.
It's not.
It's not all.
It's not all, like I'm not...
I'm not saying pay everybody at one time, I say, hey, you can do it in stages, you know, but make sure they get their money, the people that have been, uh, laid off.
Can you give us a total amount of vacation time?
I'll stand for...
Outstanding, if you...
I'll, I'll work to it.
Okay. Councilwoman Boe, then, Councilwoman...
So to see a clarity on this five thousand dollars, 'cause I, I was in the same position you were, Mr. Short, thinking that we had decided not to touch the five thousand dollars in the general fund, and to look at the oil lease money, but again, the ninety days is, is, is too long, uh, obviously, grass is growing up so bad that you can't seem to settle, obviously, Miss, Miss Janey going off in that direction, she might, I completely understand the pressure you're under to get that grass cut, and the safety issues that affected your ward, just like they affect all of our ward, so that's why I'm kind of curious to see if we're gonna move forward with the five thousand dollars or not, 'cause I need to get some folks out there working bad for KFC stop signs, for one, so I mean, I gotta get some...
As soon as her man nicks, as soon as he finish at Ward Seven.
What's that?
As soon as her man finishes at Ward Seven, he come my way.
I got my man on standby, I mean, just waiting for him to, you know, get this money one way or the other, I can work him or not, just to get it done at least one time, and then, you know, not spend all five grand, hopefully it'll cost five grand to get him to do it, but at least get some basic needs met, um, depending on how long the way, or to hire him back, again, I mean, it's just getting clarity on what we're gonna do tomorrow, would be ideal, so we can, and then have that on there, if that's, if that's the case, then, you know, if that, that doesn't go through, or it does go through, the five thousand dollars needs to be back in play immediately upon, if it's not successful, then the five thousand dollars can be delivered to a decision council, so we can go ahead and start getting our woods cut. But again, I'm, I'm for, uh, Mr. Short's position to try to hire others back, but, if that does not pass, we need a B plan, that B plan, take that five thousand, start running with it. When's...
If it doesn't pass, you're gonna revert back to the front, I think.
I don't want to.
Oh, come here, you need to...
You know, with, with a few months, and the money that's waiting for holes, I guarantee you, we'll get your grass cut for a long... You know, with, with a few months, the money this way, the funds of this one house, I guarantee you, we will get more grass cut for a longer period of time than each of you guys going out doing contracted work. I can assure you, we will get more grass done, more garbage picked up, and, but I, most important thing, we got thirteen families now, got some money to come into their house. So, uh, once again, I'm just gonna put it on folks for a hold up and that. You know, I know that my colleagues speak so passionately about, uh, a desire to help displaced workers, but when it comes to task and opportunity to make it happen, it, it is void. I don't understand this, but once again, we will be moving forward.
Mr. President. Hello, councilwoman Benjamin, councilwoman Jackson, and councilwoman Charles. Hello, councilwoman Benjamin.
Okay, um, this is, this is not why I have a man of consensus here, this is brought up. So grass cutting season will be over after a while and, uh, we will have snakes, roads, and, you know, and everything else. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm literally waiting on your man to finish. I've already asked, uh, councilwoman Thomas to send her back on over to Ward Four. Residents are now seeing snakes. Uh, I got a call, uh, remember yesterday, well, this weekend, uh, that a resident, um, they refused to cut their grass. And they refuse to allow citizens who are volunteers to cut it for free to cut it. And, um, this is where I need code enforcement to step in. I don't know if you're there, need code enforcement to step in. We're over the twelve inches and we actually can go on this grass property allowed, uh, because they're beyond the twelve inches. Uh, but I have volunteer citizens ready to cut this, but it's just crazy and ridiculous. Uh, this whole grass situation is crazy and ridiculous, and it's just a hazard now. It's not just overgrown brown grass now, it's a, it's a hazard now. And we need to, uh, we need to move on now.
Madam Treasurer, is the number of unemployed sixty-eight or ninety?
Uh, I, I would say it's actually ninety-eight, but I will be your, uh.
Ninety-eight, okay, 'cause I was told it was in, yeah, I was told the new number. The new number is in the nineties, close to a hundred. So I just wonder if we're talking about sixty-eight or we're talking about ninety?
I think it's more than last of ninety.
Okay.
Is that what retirement is as well? Is they get positions, is it?
She's, she's gonna do that. You, you come back and, uh, and, and you let us know that? Okay, and the five thousand that you found in the general fund came from what areas, one more time?
This is, um, you all through budget, you all, because of unappropriated, had an unappropriated amount in the budget for purposes like this, or anything that was unexpected, um, that you need to come back and, uh, prove in the budget, and that's what this is, unappropriated budget.
Thank, thank.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Jackson and councilwoman Thomas, councilwoman Boe.
Okay, I, I guess what I wanted to ask was if, is there a way that if all the council members, just like councilwoman Thomas, since she's already proceeded and councilwoman Vividum says she wants to utilize the general, um, at the, the rate, um, I think we could keep that in the business, or something along that way, couldn't do it all. I know that I called two companies, they can't, um, take on the work, I mean, or maybe just don't want to take on the work at five thousand dollars. But I also got a quote for one street, oh, of three hundred dollars, and so I'm thinking the edge of the cutting, and this is one time. And I'm thinking, oh my God, this really, really good right, but it was, it's not. It was paid by someone else, but, um, not paid by, uh, by the city, but someone else paid to have it done, but, you know, it was really done really well. I'm thinking, if you do this on one street for three hundred dollars at one time, what are we going to, how are we gonna spend this? So if all of the council members don't want to do that, if you look at, is it, okay, Mr. President, that we look at, you know, maybe the old salmon or whoever wants to. My only concern then would be, um, assuring us that the mayor is willing to allow the workers to work in those areas. Um, workers, um, at our, man, if we can't be assured then, I would like to partner with some other council members, improve our money, twenty, thirty thousand dollars in contract for someone to get it done. If we can't be assured that the mayor would actually make the workers, I mean, the areas that, that, I, I mean, I need, you know, Dallas Avenue, and I need King Street, and I need Petterson Cell Avenue, I don't need, um, the Wallbeks and Ballpark. Though it needs to be done, I'm just saying not to do those first. And so if, if definitely, my concern, I don't mind partnering, because I think we could get more done for a bigger pool of money than we came with just my little five thousand.
Thank you, councilwoman. That's, councilwoman Thomas, and councilwoman Boe.
I would like to tell this councilman before, uh, before we all decide about finding the money to cut grass, and you council need to realize this, 'cause I'm telling you the truth. Before we came up with this money for this grass to cut, Mr. Catlin, Mr. Catlin is one of the people that I, uh, choose the next. We have city lots, city lo, I have a lot of city lots in my ward that Mr. Catlin is gonna, gonna cut that grass. And Mr. Catlin was gonna be the one that the mayor was gonna get to cut the entire city. He has his own lawn service. Mr. Catlin told me that he was sitting back waiting on the mayor's decision. But after we came up with the, uh, how we found this money for to do in our ward, they never called Mr. Catlin back. I know Mr. Catlin. He's got a lawn, big lawn service, yes, did school serve. Uh, and he waited and waited and waited, and, uh, they never did call him back. They, he rode around, he even came in my ward, him and Van Diver and the mayor, they rode around in, 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 in the vehicles to all of our wards in our areas that the grass needs to be cut. And Mr. Catlin was waiting on to hear from the city. The city never did get back with Mr. Catlin. So when, when I got Mr. Catlin and, and Mr. Fitz, I gave Mr. Fitz the roadway, all my, uh, Ward Seven roadway from Chestnut Boulevard, I, I, they destructed. All the city roadway, and I asked Mr. Catlin to take all the, the city lots, because there are so many lots, people are calling every day that, uh, when y'all gonna cut this grass? Snakes coming out, this and this. On Sunday morning, I'm getting ready to go to church, you calling, you about grass cut. I don't own a lawn mower, but I'm gonna get your grass cut. So, and my other thing is this about what Ms. Shaw said about the workers. When it comes to workers about part-time people, I look at the future of, of all employees. You have more than part-time people, you got full-time people out here that don't have jobs. Um, I, I admire what you're doing, I admire what you're saying about part-time people working for about two or three weeks a month. But after that, who's to say that, like the, the mayor made a statement on the radio, council people need to let him do his job? We have been sitting back letting him do his job. What, are, are the citizens supposed to be punished? Because you lay off all these workers, and what we are trying to do is trying to get where we live at. Now, I don't know about nobody else, but I done looked at this grass long enough. I done rode around and I done seen people cussing going down the sidewalk, talking about us. And I done had almost knocked out, dragged by the grass with, with some of the citizens. So I had to move forward. I had to do, 'cause I had the citizen of several is tired of this. Even about the cemetery, they back on that again. Hey, you, you speak of, uh, let you do your job. When are you gonna bring some people back to get this job done? That's our problem. I'm doing as, as, as a leader of me, as I represent Ward Seven. I'm tired of getting me down, and I'm gonna move forward. If the consequence or whatever, the people gonna be happy 'cause the grass, oh, they cut it, they cut it.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilwoman Boe.
Uh, uh, we debate. Is, is there anything we can do about we debate, Mr. Trump?
I think there's an ordinance.
There is an ordinance, but nothing's getting done. So, the question is, what can council do to say, hey, you gotta, because we need somebody to go out there and tell these people to cut their grass?
Yeah.
Or get it cut and charge it back.
No more process.
Excuse me. City council can facilitate that process, and I'd be happy to go talk to those individuals and ask them to cut their grass, or send you their addresses and have you send a letter saying, hey, cut your grass, so we're gonna cut for you. But something's gotta get done. And then, uh, uh, getting the homeless torn down, can you check and see where we are on Cone Drive, as far as the house that burned on Cone Drive? See if that's, I could use a check too, but I didn't know if you knew, uh, Mr. Russell, we talked to him before. His house burned on Cone Drive on Russell's home? And it's been sitting there now for some time, so insurance surely would have reacted to it by now, at least had sensor activity. But part of the weed and seed program is to look at houses that can be torn down or razed, and, uh, so that was one of the hotspots, 'cause that's in a perfect neighborhood, that lot is still viable, so. Might get that figured out as we can, if possible. I don't know, but it's still viable.
Oh, that was councilman's, uh, they, council. Yeah, uh, I, I have some same concern, Ms. Jackson, what she said, uh, the mayor run the day, the day I was, we seen him waiting our time, we voted, hide these thirteen people back. He goes, wait a minute, y'all can't hide nobody up here. You know, council, y'all can't hide nobody. What, what y'all talking about? I'm, I'm the mayor. So why, why should we see him go through this bogus stuff? Only thing, I'm thinking, somebody won't see if we're gonna hide folk back and, and wanna set on the radio show, yeah, see, I, they trying to get thirteen people back, but the county voted down. Ain't no goodwill, we can't hide nobody up here, no, 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 no city workers back. We can't do that. So why should we go through this formality, voting on the council meeting, and it ain't gonna happen nowhere? It ain't gonna happen. So don't, don't blame the employer's integrity, don't blame the council integrity, 'cause that's all I'm saying, this fool's, no, we can't hide these people. So why you, why you gonna put up for a vote, you know, we can't hide them? You need to bring that sorry mail up there and say, Mayor, you gonna hide these folk back? Let him say it, 'cause he the one gotta do it. He the one fired. So why you trying to put the pressure on us to hide thirteen people we you know we can't do? You know we can't do. We don't recognize HR and company. I ain't attacking you, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know who, who, who have the right to hide you folk? Council, you don't have that right. You don't have that right.
We all should know, with our land, we will reach and hide them. And I thought it was playing something, only thing we do is make allocation available. Must've ran off, that's all. I thought you understood that. Hell, you don't. We just making money available. This is a specific request from the executive branch that we should get them to be hired on specific matters, clean up garbage, and to cut grass. Now, you know where once we make the funds available, we do it. And once these thirteen people come back to work, then they're in the hands of the mayor. So, so to, 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 to imply that we didn't know this, I know I knew it, you may not have knew it. But the only thing I was recommending is making money available, not that we gonna be in the process of streaming, bringing back the thirteen people.
Councilwoman Jackson.
I got nothing to say.
What, what I just wanna say, uh, it's already money available in the budget to have folk back, you know, have folk, so why, why should we have to vote on some of this money already dealt? It's, it's money already dealt, so we shouldn't have to vote on it back. Only thing you do, they go around that regular bear and hope, superior let you in, and you say, um, uh, you know, Mayor, can you hide these folk back? That's all it take. I'm telling you, it don't take, it don't take the council to vote on that. We wasting our time voting back. I wish my colleagues on the staff, and I heard some said they already did this, they already done that. But if I, I said, you don't take this five thousand and have thirteen people, then you don't bring thirteen people back. You regard, we're talking about.
Well.
Because the council is in charge of the money. So I, I think the council people do understand what this council vote for, that's what, that pays with.
Hello, councilwoman Jackson, and the councilwoman Benjamin, then I'll let you go.
Great, I wanted to make sure, and I spoke to councilwoman Brenda, that, um, actually we give, we, uh, freeze on the funding to hiring anyone. So if anyone would have to report council to doing hiring, so we do have that authority, so we put a freeze on all funding back in September, right?
That depends on what's in there.
Well, we, then we should make sure that we make our attorney aware of that, because it's supposed to be a freeze on all funding, funding for new hires and or promotions. Um, additionally, I wanted to say, let's partner. Can we partner together? We can use Mr. Catlin, we can use your man. Let's just get it done, because I really have to say that, um, during this discussion, I may not have the faith, um, that the executive branch may hear things out in that way, I'm sorry. Um, just keep me informed and I get better. But, um, I need to get my, such a, I had an, uh, older female in my ward call me so many times today in court that I stepped out because I thought something was wrong. I'm like, man, is this, the Y caller saying something's wrong with your league, what's going on? And she said, you know, my, I saw a snake in my area coming out of the weeks, and so we, and I told her to call me back next morning, that this is an item that's up for discussion, and then we'd discuss it. I still believe that we have more money together than separate. I, you know, my area is large, my grass is a large ground. I don't have any oil lease funds, so even if it comes available, it's waiting to be, I have about four hundred dollars left, uh, and so I don't have any funds. I would love to borrow any of the people, uh, right, to do the, any of these offices that we can. Uh, in addition, I'm, I'm out of discretion there as well, because, not because I've been going on trips or using it illegally, people come up and trying to take care of things, you know, more. So don't accuse me of any of those, those things. I, 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 and I'm not talking about other council members, I'm talking about what gets stated on, on the radio.
That's right.
Um, so please, uh, what, uh, so what, what I'm, what I'm saying, uh, today is, if we have someone like Ms. Thomas, if there's someone, uh, councilwoman Benjamin, excuse me, councilwoman. Councilwoman Benjamin, that has someone, um, in my, let's pull out one of the, I don't mind, um, saying, uh, Ward Seven, Three, and Four, One, or whoever, get together and have this done. I don't mind doing that, and I have my five thousand dollars ready, if somebody can just partner, we will let's get this done.
Councilwoman Benjamin, and councilwoman Thomas, then we're gonna put funding ready.
That's right.
Cut the grass. Um, I, I just wanna remind you, I'll be, since we're talking about clarification and all that, um, yes, we can make the funds available. And it does not mean that's what's gonna happen with those, uh, particular funds after, um, councilwoman Shaw has said that once we make the funds available, then we're, we're done with it. We are. He is correct. He's correct. We make the funds available, we're done with it. And so the mayor may do as he pleases in that area, uh, concerning that area right there. Uh, he can, he can hire thirteen people, he can hire one person to do the whole job with a whole pot of money. Or he can just say, we don't have a wherewithal to do it. Y'all allocated the money, but all machines are gone, and we cannot cut your grass. Or the zero terms that the Bush all gave us for free have been stolen. Uh, or, not saying it been stolen either, but I'm saying, you know, it could pop up, things happen around here. Uh, things happen to equipment around here, things happen to people around here, uh, that speak out. They, they disappear from work. They're working today and they're not working the next hour. We don't know. And so when we, if we do allocate, he is, he is correct. We're done with it. So just, just remember that.
Good point, councilwoman. Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, so, uh, also, I, I have, uh, I have good residents in my neighborhood that means that have lawnmower, we have people that volunteer, helps me. It's about communication, and, uh, they see what their council person is trying to do, clean up their ward. I have a lot of people that volunteer, goes out and cut some of these areas that, that look so bad where they live at. So you have to connect, you have to be together with the people that lives in your area to wanna make changes. And so I don't have to be trying to, uh, you stay in a big fine house on this corner, and you stay in a little, little house here. Person gonna, gonna cut front, they gonna cut the other person. So it, some areas that don't get cut, that's where you, the city roadway, you know, people go out on, on the other side and cut city roadway to make it look good. So this about us working together, when they see the council person out there trying to clean up and trying to keep their community looking good, we have connection. And you always gonna have somebody to help you too.
Thank you, councilwoman. End of course before attorney Jones, end of course.
I got one for, for we leave.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
Uh, Tony, when you say all contracts, I wanna ask you something, uh, if, uh, you just said like Candace, you was Candace, uh, Ms. Candace, I'm not talking about you, I could use you as example. Uh, with the situation that we have with Ms. Candace, uh, get going, getting, uh, that's a cabinet there, the, all right, going. Don't, uh, any other city workers that works, uh, work for the city, uh, if they're working for the city, uh, and they're supposed to be up on a contract, isn't that contract supposed to go for in any other department?
Thank you, I'm saying.
You know where I'm coming from?
I think, I think it's a good idea, if you're employed, an independent contractor, to be worked at a contract.
Yeah, but I'm saying, like, if you have an independent contract in the building, and they're working there in a department, and then you don't have a contract for them, you know what I'm saying, but you paying them a city salary. You know what?
Say this, like, if you're some type of agency, you're working for the city. Yeah, I think it's true.
Okay, can I ask you this here? Right now, do you think that, uh, you, you are lawyer, and you represent the, the mayor, and you, and you represent the council? If contract's gonna, gonna fall with all of the procedures how it's supposed to be done, done to this contract? Excuse me, um, you guys, I don't disrespect y'all, so please don't do right there. Santa, I'll do y'all like that. Okay?
If the city has somebody that still works for them, that's not an employee in the city?
Yes.
It is a good idea legally to have a contract that spells out the purpose of what the party determines, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So do you think it's fair that, uh, the council, uh, have to do what we are doing, trying to get Ms. Candace under the people that running out of the city? This is a city program. And do you think it's fair that we have to, we are going through all of this to put her up on the contract, and then we have somebody to be here over, what, six, seven, eight months, not under a contract, but get paid, uh, a salary?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have.
I know you keep saying you think. I understand what you're saying.
Legally, I don't know if you have to. Like, I know y'all have police, you know, use police money, you don't have a contract for that, is that right? Is that right? Police money, don't y'all hire people, don't go to a contract for that?
No, no, we talking about in a totally different.
No, I'm saying, as far as getting money out of a contract, it means you don't have to, but it's a good idea to do. That's what I'm saying. So, so with the, like, the police money, I think, you know, sometimes hiring, you start to work, sometimes there's not a contract, is that right?
We have contract on everything we do.
Is there even a police work?
No, sometimes there's work to be done, let's say, public works.
Yeah.
Like, uh, there's maintenance on the street, and public works to go in and get it done, whatever, whatever procedure they do. And the work to be done out of that particular councilman's police. So the councilman would not be in a contract to say.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The city might get to.
That's right, yeah. I mean, I, I, I would recommend the city, everybody in the city, to start.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. See, a lot of the council don't know, we, 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 city council's sitting up here, and some of them try to think that we trying to, uh, work against us, but when you say one thing for everybody, it should fall, it's not that you put a policy out and request for contract, and then somebody else don't follow up on the contract. But the council, you wanna lean so hard on the council, we're doing procedures of following the contract, when we have administration that has, has employees that, that are working under the city, and they don't follow up under the contract.
Yeah, I mean, I, I recommend to y'all, there, there is, if you have somebody that's not an employee, it's a good idea to do. That's our recommendation. Here, Catherine, here. And y'all have general laws, y'all have requirements for insurance, uh, business licenses.
Let's say for the back department, Councilwoman Benjamin, maybe some like, for real league, where there is a contract with the city, but, uh, I, I feel like I know what particular employer you're talking about.
So yeah, contracts do make decisions, I think, I think we all use them. I think we all use them. But, you know, at a, at a league meeting, um, maybe about three or four years ago, and Madam Treasurer, you may have been at that meeting, you were Attorney Nunn, you may have been at that meeting. There are certain things that serve as contracts, certain other instruments that serve as contracts. But you don't have to take it to the attorney, and you don't have to go through the process. That, those are things you learn at the league meeting, and, you know, when I went. Uh, they, those instruments serve as, they serve as contracts. Yeah.
Signed by the parties, that's right. I'm sure that he saw the contract.
And, uh, Madam Treasurer, if you were at that meeting, if you can expand on that.
Uh, what he said was that, uh, what the rocks had, he had a conversation with Robin, but he said those purchase orders could either be considered as a contract. Um, but for those that the services are more detailed, the scope of services is more detailed, we recommend that we give a contract. But if it's just more something that's, um, clear and concise, then a purchase order could either serve as a contract.
And that was new information that came down probably in, I don't know, two thousand thirteen, fourteen-ish, somewhere.
It needs to be signed by the parties that are intending to buy it. So they need to sign a resolution first.
Yeah, so there are certain small instruments that consider as a contract.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Well, we are contracted for services, we're not talking about purchase orders, and we're doing work, contracted for services and for employees, uh, which standing as an example, absolutely. Um, those contracts are supposed to be approved by council. Stay back, I thought all contracts were supposed to be approved by the council, come before the council, and the council approves all contracts. And so if you don't have a contract, or you should not just enter into, into a contract, um, it may be perceived as an effort to go around the council. Um, if you, you're not introducing a contract, it's supposed to have a contract, you never entered into a contract. If they are providing a service, and you don't include the council, um, that just may be a way to avoid the process.
Yeah, the council's supposed to, contracts, you cannot legally hide this in, without, without, without.
Uh, there's three parts of a contract, offer consideration, acceptance, any view from us, whoever has those three parts, whether it's a piece of paper, a napkin, or anything else that the party signed, is a legal binding contract. So, right, so I mean, okay, I'm just making sure, this is basic contractual law we're talking about here, folks. I mean, I'm just making sure I understand what we spent our time discussing, which is.
They have contracts.
Sometimes, I just wanna make sure. But anything with offer consideration, acceptance, anything, even a napkin, anything, uh, two signatures on there for the interest of the parties that we're buying, is a contract. And your only other point is that cities not, not to go sign yourself in a contract.
I need property, you have somebody working in there. Since you want to talk about a napkin, you have a person working IT department, that's not up on the contract, and, and, uh,
That person.
Is continuing, you're paying them a salary. You know what I'm saying? If you have a person that works, he works for the city, works up on the IT, he's getting paid out of IT with the salary. So this is what I'm saying. You had another employee that was in there, uh, that got laid off. Now you understand what I'm coming from?
Yeah, I'm saying this.
And he's, he has seniority to do.
And so I, I guess my whole point is not whether a contract is in place. My whole point was, all contracts have to come through council. And so if we're having, if, if we're having someone working in the, within the city, that they're currently not under contract, then we need to speak with our attorney, to make sure that they're not being paid. Um, they cease sentences, it's illegal, um, for our attorneys, both of them, and, and stop that immediately, because the council is over the funds, and the council is over the contracts. And so we haven't authorized that those funds to be spent in that way. We do not currently have a contract, we need to know exactly what's going on. And I guess that's the premise of everything that we're talking about here today, and that's why we got a attorney in place, they can make us aware when these things occur, and can, and can remedy that, remedy that by asking the parties at the, uh, the department is and others, um, the mayor, to bring their contract before the council and/or stop the services immediately. And, uh, this is president, I would, actually, we do that. Um, we, we, of course, obtain legal advice from Attorney Jones, it's real, uh, Attorney Seagull. But, uh, we're over contracts, and we don't current any other contract, and we're operating outside of our policies and procedures, and we're operating here.
Any other questions for the panel?
Yes. Um, number, um, I'm gonna be talking about number fifteen when you, when you're gone, but while you're here, that's appointing, uh, chief of police. So, of course, you probably figured out, we're getting the times, tons and tons of phone calls about the police chief with the new developments that have happened in another city, and all those good things. And, and one of the questions that was pressing me, because somebody asked it of me, and maybe you can find out, or maybe you already know, is that, um, law, law enforcement, if it's proven, law enforcement, uh, being abusive to a spouse is, is supposed to be on, that, that is law and unacceptable, it's not supposed to happen, and there are consequences? I don't know what that is. Somebody brought it to me and asked me if I knew about it. And so since you're here, I'm, I'm asking you, um, what is it that we need to be thinking about in that area if this proves to be true?
Uh, now, I guess, anybody that we introduce to this house is bad, but, but it's law.
Well, it's a given, it's vague. But what I'm saying, is it on the books, is, is it, it is, is it a law about it? And is, is there a consequence that's supposed to be served because, for law enforcement?
Yeah, I mean, give me more details, now, I'll, I'll look into this.
Okay, 'cause I don't know, yeah.
Is it a handy book? Yes.
Is what?
Is it important?
What does it say?
I can't even know what they say, but it's saying something to affect the national value.
Yeah, it may be, because there's two different handles, and one, I think, in the city, and one, it's police. This may be in the police, let me look, let me look.
Yeah, yeah, so it's asking me, you know, people have been calling and saying, you know, before y'all consider, uh, appointing a, a police chief or appointing an interim, y'all need to consider this, and y'all need to consider that, and y'all need to consider this person, and y'all need to consider that person. So many things are being thrown at us, and that is the one thing I didn't have an answer for.
And to the point, I mean, again, if you had X amount of days of leave, and you qualify for FMLA, so, I mean, that's subject to interpretation based on what HR asks as far as number of days absent prior to taking FMLA, right? So you're not responsible for necessarily paying, if you don't have the time to take it, you can take it, we wouldn't pay.
That is being looked into.
Right, so again, it's all these are questions swirled around the legality of everything, the law associated with domestic violence, to your point. You know, again, the, the situations going on legally. Well, I'm just saying that there's various things.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm just saying.
Clarity going on, and we're a move forward in this regard.
I emailed, uh, some of the courses, we emailed, some of the courses that were up.
You emailed it already, too?
That's all.
It's already been addressed.
Ladies President, I, I'm, I, I hope they say, maybe that lane, whatever. I, 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 I need to return an out bill. You had Baxter, I mean, it's, it's no, we, we saw the police car, we don't need no police car in baby day, send that. I'm telling you.
Excuse me, Mr. President, why don't we have a consecutive session?
The vehicle is already over, it's over there.
Yeah, all right, all right. Any other questions for Attorney, Attorney Nunn?
So, no, so you'll look into that and let me know. Okay, 'cause I'm in the line.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah, uh, Attorney, you wasn't present at the time when we did a resolution. The reason why, and Mr. President Bowie and every council that's sitting up there, I never, in my life, I never took a dime from anybody. I give the shirt off my back. But when you go out on the radio and accuse me of spending discretionary, that's a lie. I, I chose to give to my ward a portion of my salary, and I want this to go to the paper, because you went live on the radio. I did not take any money. Not you, not you, no, no, not you. No, I'm gonna show you something. Not you. This, this is, this is how much I care so about, so much about where I, where I'm from. I give the shirt off my back, but for you to go on the radio and badmouth the councils and badmouth us, and we can't have no feedback, uh, that bother me. But when you get on the radio and say, uh, about council people, what they have, I've been doing this for, for five years in my, in my ward. We have been having, uh, we always have, and a lot of people don't understand what a bottom of reunion is. A bottom of reunion is, is where we grew up at, where I was raised from a child up to the age where I'm at now, where I have a living mother that's eight, six years old, still living. Siblings that grew up in the community, where we have other siblings, little babies and stuff, where we try to, our community had been, it's a healing process of five years trying to show people in the community how we got along, we didn't have gun violence, we didn't have people getting killed, it's about social event. It wasn't about nobody out there with the mayor saying, how he said. But I wanna let you know, and I want the paper to know, we did a resolution, I did a resolution to give my salary to my ward, to my ward. So when my ward do something in there that I can help and be a part of, I've been a part of this here five years. This year was five years anniversary. I took my money, it'd be so big, it'd get bigger every year, to put a tent up and to fly, to buy bouncers for the kids. I did not spend the city money. I spent money that I have been giving towards my ward every year. And I took that because it was a time for me to never, everything I done, I went out and asked. I asked people to give. Some of the council people give me, I asked them for help, because it's, it get big, and you got a community where a lot of people eat children like juice, water, and stuff, and it was hot. It's been a degree of a hundred and some degrees, it was hot. And if it so, I chose to take my money to rent a tent and to rent bouncers. So I want people to know that I have a heart, too. That's my money. I did not spend the discretionary, and I have a resolution here to show you what I take out, what I do. And it's, it's embarrassed for the mayor to go on the radio and talk about the council like we having a showdown, get down, when it wasn't a showdown, get down. So, and accuse me of spending money, I spent my own money that I put towards it. Not you.
Let's be clear, okay. You, you have a question for me?
No, sir. I just wanna let you know, you weren't aware, you weren't aware of our resolution that we, what, what I do, give to the, the area.
Councilwoman Thomas and Councilwoman Brenda?
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas, um, since I have known you, and since you've been on the council, I've known you to have several meetings. And every event that you have had, that I have attended, I haven't attended every one of them, but every one of them that I have attended have been something to bolster your community. They have been to engage your community, and they have been to help, whether it's, um, help to curb violence, whether it's to get out people, to help clean up, whether it's just to encourage them, because you had a ward that, that has for so long has felt neglected, um, as you and some of your people have. And that, there is nothing wrong with using, that is what discretionary money is for, to use within your discretion and within the ethics laws, to do things within your ward that will be beneficial to your constituents. I can't imagine you're doing things that are not within the ethical standards, based on what I have seen of you. So you cannot hear what anybody says about you on the radio or anywhere else. I can certainly understand you being upset about it. In fact, I've had to take the, I have had to take the attitude, what people say about me is none of my business, because, Lord, people surely love to talk, and the tales get taller as they go down the line. But I think that you just don't need to worry about that at all, because people that know you know that you do good for your people. And I just am here to say, I wasn't at that event, but I would just bear, um, anything I have on the fact that whatever you had for your ward was to benefit your ward, to bring them close, to instill a sense of camaraderie and a sense of community, right, and, and community, um, organization and things to help them get the old neighborhood watch concept. That is what that is built on, that is what we, the state is built on, so just don't be offended by that.
No, and well, uh, the way, it, it kind of bothered me because, you know, you would expect a mayor to go out and, and talk about events that people in your community, and you never show up, you don't show up to anything, but you badmouth people that are doing good in their community. You try to say we stealing, but we not stealing. You try to say we stealing, but we not stealing.
Well, I'm- You can't make a man hard.
I'm kind of thinking, just thanking the council that you guys are listening to.
Councilwoman, have the councilman run that?
Yeah, I just want to say, Councilwoman Thomas, I thank you for putting it out there. You know, don't let the email-
Successful.
Email tried to derail you, but you have so, don't even worry about that. And I came down to the bottom to tell you, 'cause I'm part of it, too. I was raised on both sides of the town. But, so, don't even worry about that. And my next question was, what I wanted to know to Wade, who paying for the mayor's radio? Did that come out of city money?
Yes, it came out of tourism.
Okay, tourism, so, okay.
So, H Fitz, city money, don't worry about it.
You know what I said, and that's on the-
Tourism.
Then, hello. Hey, you need to put that on consent, gentlemen. With the word, I want you to not define, but just put it out.
But keep this in mind, too. Usually when you do a contract with their regular state, I mean, you can cut it.
He didn't have authorization in the contract.
Cause all contracts, all contracts are supposed to come through the council.
Did he just say that conversation?
So, we, I never vote on a contract. I didn't- Radio show, on that.
Madam Treasurer says she think we did.
We did?
I think you all proved it.
What was it tracking?
I'll track.
We were supposed to be taking-
I mean-
Taking my talking time.
It's a year contract, yearly contract.
Hold on, can we check the minutes? Hold it there, hold it there.
So, why we need to prove these or not?
His contract was this, our contract was that.
We actually think that was by name, we pulled out by name.
It's a year contract, same time.
Well, we're pulling these.
Tourism money was used on it, so we spent tourism money to match the city.
I'm very proud of it, I believe the documents are bringing tomorrow.
And see, like I said, it's a non-productive radio show, all they can do is try to bash the council. He don't never talk about nothing, being how we can build our city, work together, partner, none of it. It's just like, oh, Mr. Fattow, I ain't spending that on my car. I just want y'all to know, this is my parking money, I ain't buying no money. This is even no city money paid for the car. Oh, it's a breeze. Yes, ma'am, that's how you do it. I'm like, man, that's a joke, man. That show got the worst rating that, nobody don't listen at that show.
Nobody, they said good enough.
Yeah, nobody don't listen at that show, you got the worst rating it is. But so, we, it just weighs a taxpayer money for him to be just every pride just talking about us, what we doing.
And he said, he said pride on the radio, they try to bring in workers, they, I be the city. Ain't that right, Dan?
Yeah, ma'am, yeah, ma'am.
They can't win no way.
Okay, Councilwoman Fitz, ain't that right?
I don't have a certification, but those were pretty good. I don't have one. Yeah, that's pretty good.
Go ahead.
Madam Treasurer, since it's been brought up. So, you said that's been paid out of terrorism. Can you find out what else is being paid out of terrorism on this end of the spectrum? And would you also do this, please?
It's challenging.
Because it may be a renegade party. Would you find out planning and development, what is the process, the money's being spent? Why can a person in there okay something we're supposed to be okay? Can you find out what's been paid out of planning and development, also?
Expediiously.
Yes, ma'am.
Expediishly, please, ma'am.
Can I just get back to you?
Cause I'm the chair, I can even find out.
Yeah, I-
I think it's been over or something, or whatever.
Yeah.
There were things like Charles. They were twenty-five thousand, or something.
Well, the large part of was mainly, was the council pool for the planning and the special projects. And when we all sit down, we're doing budget season, the planning and development director, Karen Thompson, has given you all what specifically, the piece of requesting eighty thousand, gives a breakdown as to what those grants are being supposed to be used for.
Supposed to be.
So, I will give the detail for that, detail level, and then you all can give an explanation.
Please, please do, because a couple of years ago, you know, I don't dig into Jazz undergrads, and you know that, but a couple of years ago, you gave me a report that the mayor's Jazz report had, on one of the particular years, was being, part of it was being funded out of planning and development, this is a special project. We all got, uh-uh, no.
That other Jazz thing.
And we all have, we all have special projects, and so, that's not on a list that was given to us.
Right.
It's someone had to determine that it was worthy enough to give that money to.
Right.
And it just slid off to the process.
I think, I think the only entertainment that's only is fireworks.
It is, you gave me a report when I asked for it, and I was curious, because, you know, every year is something about Jazz undergrads, so I was curious of how the other Jazz project was being paid when you gave me that report, and I took that report. And I said to myself, who, who in the planning and development determines this? And I wanted to know. It might be ready already.
You have to get it to the ex-mine once again, she, Councilwoman Fitz, you had your donation to see your cost, and you didn't have to rely on the city to help those costs. And you still have T-shirt money that's coming in for us, so a T-shirt, so I could-
Yeah, but I ordered the T-shirt and didn't pay, I mean, I'm like, do you want me to? Do you want me to?
Yeah, I'll have all that, of course. I do have another, I do have some shirts.
No, I'm waiting my bag.
Have the Councilwoman Jack.
I told her our anniversary tomorrow.
That's what I said.
She, she looking all nice tonight, night's not the night, night's not the night. So, y'all, I heard that, so I'm giving it my share. But why you brought up planning and development, I wanted to say that if y'all are going to allow me to go out of order, that I contacted our treasurer last week about the tree removal and trimming that I talked to you about. And she made me aware that money had been utilized to remove trees all year long out of the downtown beautification, expense in planning and development. A lot of these trees are in my area, thank God they've been removed, but I was never notified. And I'm telling people, you know, we cannot, I'm sending the emails requesting, I'm sending the arbiters, emails, and he's stating this, this tree needs to come down, or this one needs to be trimmed, and I'm not giving a response, I'm sending this, and then they're coming down. And I'm thinking, oh my goodness, another citizen had their own tree down. And that wasn't the case, from what the treasurer has made me aware. Currently, we have four thousand dollars remaining in that fund. And what I'm asking is that we consider this planning and development, the downtown beautification, right, it was twelve thousand, started off at twelve thousand. But we consider taking that four thousand, I've asked Councilwoman Bowie, Councilwoman Johnson, to partner with me for a thousand dollar part of our discretionary, and that we take the downtown area and keep it clean the rest of the season. I know all of us have our five thousand dollars that we're trying to give funds with, but specifically, you know, we have to give this individuals, and we need chairs to come together with the construction, putting up firefly beds, we don't have any hay, we don't have any wood down those beds, the ground's old, the city hall's just mixed, there are weeds that-
They clean that, they clean that, they had said, they went all them tools out there.
Right.
They clean all that stuff out.
Right, but I'm talking on a continual basis, and, okay, and so, what I discussed with one of the individuals that was working in that cleanup, is that we're going to try to partner to buy some funding, because we may have downtown, we have businesses on Water Avenue that are having to get together and pay for Water Avenue, because then we have, then we have Broad Street, we got islands growing up our side, there's a lot that needs to be done. And when we top the bridge, I think, uh, Colonel Bowie actually mentioned one on the other side of the bridge, where it says welcome to Selma, and take that all the way through downtown, Selma, through the jail, Chestnut, and through the, uh, both sides of Water Avenue. So, I'm asking if you all will allow us to put that downtown beautification funds to the U. State in this intended, and we're going to put three thousand dollars in it, and contract someone to take this area. So, we have tourists that are coming through our city, that our money has been utilized to talk about it on the radio out of our tourism, they can actually see a beautiful city, even if they think here they can have it.
Yeah, and also, we doing another cleanup to go all the way down, but hopefully, I think, Johnny, you on this side of Broad Street, where you start, by Semp? Yes, Semp is yours, and once you cross there- I'm talking about on Broad Street, how far you go?
All the way to Field.
All the way to Field Park. And then, is it, is it, is it, is it, Councilwoman Ren, off?
Yeah, ran off. But then Field Park, Field Park the last round.
Okay, well, we trying to work our way, all the way down the entrance of Broad Street, because Jackie says, Smith said, we're gonna do another cleanup Saturday, which is supposed to have the county juveniles going to come out Saturday. And why's, my cutter is cutting all around the telegram poles and the stop signs, till we gonna try to clean up all the way till we get to High, try to make it the area. When people come into the town, make it, you know, cut all the grass on the city road and beautify the entrance of Selma coming through, so that's what we working on. Yeah, she said, I talked to her today, she said that Saturday morning, we gonna get back out. And, yeah, she says Saturday, that, but they gonna have more of the kids from the boot camp. She said, mm-hmm, we going on, but Mr. Fitz is now, he started from Chestnut Book Bar, cutting all the grass around the telegram poles, the stop sign. So, we gonna try to work all the way down, we gonna try to go all the way up in the entrance of downtown. So, we got to get sidewalk on the other end, like Ward Eight, the downtown entrance. So, we gonna work all the way till we get it cleaned up.
Well, Mr. President, maybe we can take that from the other side of the bridge, all the way to High, we can clean up all those, but in the downtown area, make sure that we get Water Avenue, we can have, we can just send out, we have air, and see if we can, I mean, the twelve thousand dollars is been utilized for something other than its intended purpose, it's four thousand dollars remain, and then the council members are giving up at least three, and anybody else has a thousand of their discretionary to assist with this project. Does anybody have any questions, or can this be something that we all can consent?
What was that agreement?
Agreement is, we got three council members present there. Councilwoman Johnson, I said, we're giving a thousand dollars of our discretionary, and then we utilizing the four thousand that's remaining for beautification, downtown beautification, cut off the planning and development. Starting from the other side of the bridge, all the way down to High, and to keep that cleaned up.
So, the agreement is about four thousand dollars, for what is intended to be, if it was intended to be given up.
Yes, ma'am.
Give me number of the other eight thousand we didn't?
Yes, ma'am, she said that they were cutting down, was it all spent on cutting down trees? Was it, was it the other eight thousand, was all of it spent on cutting down?
Yeah, she said no more.
That was, I want to notify, I mean, I apologize to the citizens for sending that far, sorry. I'm gonna make it, get anything done, and looking like an idiot, but they were done. If you all will let me, I will head, my tree removed and trimmed. I walked to the cleanup on Dallas Avenue, and a tree hit me in the face. It was so low, I didn't have no hindrance, and I'm not that tall, and it shouldn't be that low. I'm walking on sidewalk, and it's swinging in the face. I'm stopping at your lane, wasn't paying attention, but it shouldn't have been that low. And what it made me realize is that we have a lot of trees throughout our city that need to be trimmed. Those on Dallas Avenue, if you look right there, I think it's Dallas and Lauderdale, right down Church Street. It's really, really low, and I'm asking that there are other trees that need to be removed. There are other trees, we have an insurance claim against us right now, saw a tree that fell on park and took out a windshield. The, they chose not to, I said the end of the question about the F B O as well, when we're notified, either by the city or insurance, some of the means that a tree is, that a tree is worthy of being coming down, coming down, or that it needs to be trimmed, and we're obligated to do something about it. So, I contacted Wade to ask her about it, and that's actually how I found out about how all the other funds were being used. But she is vowing, or is willing to, if we approve funding in public works, the twelve thousand dollars for us, contract someone, to get the trees trimmed, all of it and moved, as much as we can, and she is saying that next year, during our harvest cycle, since we don't have public works doing that anymore, maybe we'll actually make a line item for that, since that seems to be a concern. And so, I'm asking that we please make it to be trimmed and removed, and we have insurance claim, we got a windshield on the park, we probably don't have to pay that. But they did, after we notified Friday. Yeah, and so, because we weren't notified, we wouldn't be gathering that, so if they set this tree, if it comes after her. So, I'm asking, she's found twelve thousand, I think it was, gonna be a remaining ninety-six thousand dollars in that public works line now. She stated that she's doubtful that they are using the remaining ninety-six thousand for the end of the year, ninety-six, and we're gonna prepare maintenance. We're gonna prepare maintenance. Of course, we got a new vehicle, so we see allocated, I mean, a hundred and twenty, a hundred thousand dollars in it, and so, if we could just use the dual life swivel, and then if you all would please consider doing this, and this won't be in my ward, we can work together, just my ward, we can work together, and anyone that has tree trim. I also contact, I don't think I would allow it to, because I know if it's along their lines, they will be starting, if it's along their lines, they will-
Well, I had that.
If it's, if it's along their lines, what Mr. Carter made me aware, is that they will trim all of the things that's along their lines, unless it's in their line. So, if we could go out, maybe like we could, with less, if we could go out and partner together, and they do their part, we do our part.
Yeah, I have an issue, and I want to ask you, back here some years ago, I think maybe about, what, four years ago, then we had someone come in town, where in the area where they used to trim those trees, you know, a lot of trees that overgrown, we hadn't had that done in this city in a while.
As far, huh?
Yeah, I remember that. Oh, well, I had- Okay, well, I-
About the office.
Okay, well, we had a problem on Texaco with Mr. Ollie McWhitty, which I know he's been fussing about, he's been to the mayor's office, and this been going on three years. What has happened is that the tree is on city roadway, but the Y is, is seen on like on Texaco, anybody been on Texaco Circle before? Have a little house, single house there, and the tree is not far from his house, but it's on city roadway, and his wives are running through the tree where the tree has grown, is running through to the telegram poles on the other side. And I went to, well, he went, and I went, to Alabama Power. Audrey, he came, I sent someone out, and he said that they couldn't cut, they couldn't trim that from up under the Y, because is where the tree is on city roadway property, and the wives are running through, through his, through the tree, and they told Mr. McWhitty that they couldn't do it, Alabama Power couldn't have it trimmed.
Was it, was it cable lines?
No, it's electric wire, and he told him that he couldn't do it. No, it's electric wire now, and he told him that he couldn't do it. Well, he told Mr. McMillan is real upset, uh, after he went and saw a tree cut down on, on Hooper.
Hooper.
On Hooper, on Hooper Drive over there. And he was, he was saying, well, I've been, I've been asked for, for this to happen to me for three years, and you cut out a tree, a big tree, ain't nothing wrong, on Hooper, and he can't get his tree trimmed from the path, the wives are running through his house, from his house?
Okay, so he say, you talk about the car?
Yes, I went to see it, and Aubrey sent somebody out. The line, the, the Y is running, see the Y, in the, the pole Y, and the tree is about this, this much apart from each other. And Ollie has a little single house that's running on Texaco, his property is running on Texaco Circle. The Y is running, the Y is running through the tree to the telegram pole, and Aubrey told him, and told me that Alabama Power couldn't cut it, because it was on city roadway. And this was just week four last. Uh, it's, um, you can't miss it, it's on Texaco Circle, it's behind the E. O. B. Center.
Over by John and Long, Mark?
Yeah, uh, but, uh, but you know Texaco is, you got Texaco Street, and you got Texaco Circle. He's right there in that Texaco Circle. It's a little circle. Uh, he need to trim from the power wire from his house.
I had some problems, President, I had a call from a youth of church. And the report that I got that in this country, for the city roadway, and that the neighborhood unit was, uh, climbing their fence during the con season, getting cars on the other side of the fence. And, and the tree was allowing these children access to the fence, and it was damaging their fence. And they were afraid that some children was gonna hurt, and they requested the tree be cut down. Well, when I went out to, to visit, what he was talking about, going to the border, and it was too, and it was, I mean, and they took the report. And I was not aware that was, I, I ordered the tree itself. Well, when I contacted Alabama Power, they told me the fact, the point that the tree is on city, even, and they could not come down. Of course, there were enough men and some friends, and they came down and took it, took it out. So, Alabama Power was down in the heart of the tree that's on city roadway, unless, unless the limbs are severed.
That's what I'm talking.
It's a change of the wire, now they will cut the limb, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna remove the whole tree.
They won't just cut the limbs.
What you may want to do, Councilwoman Thomas, uh, I'm not gonna call his name, though, uh, you may want to get the, uh, uh, Robert, no, what is it, Dory, something like. Robert, yeah, you may want to get the Robert Childers, and maybe do a contract or film.
If we can get the limb, the, the limb from in between the Y one, as he said, when it keeps storming in the back, he scared that it's gonna, the lightning hit there, it's gonna burn his whole house down.
If you get with a Robert Childers, probably get, just do a contract on him, he's very reasonable, and that could be long with, uh, leaving, like, Robert.
I just need to get, I just need to get him to trim, it's a city problem.
Okay, I have a problem.
Well, Mr. President, what I'm asking is if we can clean up, uh, this on the set, and then we can give, Mr. Children, so whoever with the twelve thousand to go around the taxi, uh, they can trim, we're not facing it, on, uh, Dallas Avenue, they can trim over there, several other places, um, and so.
Is it twelve thousand?
Downtown, she said, it's twelve thousand, she found twelve thousand. So, the downtown, uh, the downtown beautification fund for, um, the downtown partnership is four thousand, that's remaining in the downtown beautification plan and the other. But this Wade has found for the tree trim, going to remove it, slash, trimming, is twelve thousand in public works. Um, does she, uh, say that we could, you know, do a budget amendment for the, uh, advocate, making?
For the entire city?
For the entire city, for the entire city, and I, that's what I specified, and I just my board, the entire city, and I guess we would determine priorities.
All right, Ms. Wade.
I also want to recommend, yes, immediately, because the money is in the, uh, if you need to increase that beautification line item now, you know, to continue, um, you find out now, um, this may be a great time to do that, if you wanna add it, eight thousand back, to make it back up there, to do what this is done. From that same line item, because we're, um, we only have three more months in the year, and we're going to the last point. So, I mean, it's not likely, it, it, you know, anything can happen, but it's not likely that public workers are gonna spend ninety-six thousand dollars on vehicle maintenance repair. One, you don't even have the operations that you have, two, two layoffs, so it's not likely that that's gonna happen.
Can you just email it?
I, I, we need to bring to you all the attention that I was informed about public works, um, before we there. I don't want to, they're, they're, you, you all need to inquire, may want to inquire about the street cut, and she, that's a part of the process. The, the one that cut, yeah, yeah, the body come with it, because I was told it was misplaced, so.
The misplaced, oh, I mean, you know what?
I told you things disappear.
Wait, 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 hold on.
So, and it, it could, you know, but, uh, place comes in from there last week.
Oh, we get, uh, we get most of them moved off and down here.
That's why you need him to.
That's why, that's why they got them moved.
I, I don't mind, but the rest of it, I need to see if they include the marina, because we're feeling the tops off boats going down the marina.
All over the city.
Right, that is recreational area, not the main thoroughfare, so I'll make sure specifically addressed in that one.
You know.
Because that's been, I don't have many phone calls I've got.
Definitely.
Getting the boats beat up in one lane going through there, because they can't.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Will you, will you mind, um, increasing, maybe, uh, tree trim by the eight thousand? We're gonna put in three thousand, please, maybe in the Saturday, and not beautification, um, because he just said the marina, uh, if we get our water street, we gotta give it.
Right down there, they, uh, down south.
So, I'm just kind of confused, so if you're gonna take twelve thousand dollars and be there specifically for tree trimming, that's a line item. And then additional eight thousand dollars from there to cover the beautification, that bring that line item back to twelve thousand.
Right, and I was saying, roughly, the, the beautification for the next three months, I think within seven thousand, maybe can, can you do the next three months, at, at least next six months to the, the budget cycle, that's what I'm thinking.
I, I'm sorry, I missed something, help me, can we just seven thousand too short?
Okay.
Because see, my recommendation is just, as opposed to you all just taking it out of your.
Discretionary.
Discretionary.
Right.
Use the money that's already available in your budget and reallocate it, so you all can use this discretionary for what you normally need.
I, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, I, I guess what I'm asking is that for twelve thousand, and we got the, for the trees for concrete, or so many, we maybe got so many, can we increase that a little bit, because I think there's gonna be more. Funding to carry out, to, I was saying, I was thinking maybe a thousand is in each board.
So, so why don't you just increase it to twenty thousand, as opposed to twelve? And then additional eight thousand for beautification?
That's it.
First email.
The additional eight thousand is for downtown, okay, so, so out of the twenty thousand, we don't need to be doing downtown?
No, no.
And I want, okay, then you make sure, okay, because we're talking about two different processes, we're talking adding, adding for downtown, and we're talking twenty for the rest of the city.
Okay.
And we're talking, we're talking about two separate, not just this two separate process, we're talking about two separate projects, because downtown, that's gonna be cut grass, it's gonna be putting, um, flower beds, it's gonna be removing the supplies.
Beautification.
Beautification, and the tree trimming is going to be tree trimming period, so, I mean.
There's a lot of items that says.
Lot of things considered downtown, so I want you to say I can't take a tree down, and lot of things downtown.
I've got the S. B. laws in there, you get eight thousand?
No, that's not gonna be a part of the.
All right, Councilwoman Thomas.
You just told me, it's in me, got a contract license and stuff for the trimming, tree at Mr.?
He's licensed.
Oh, he licensed, you got insurance too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm just saying, uh, uh, when I get Mr. Ollie, I got to, we have got to take care of him, he been three years, and the Alabama Power say they can't do it. All he wanna do is get the limb trimmed from the power line from his house.
Why won't we, uh, just be one person, I mean, contract with one person, and get it all done, throughout the city?
Well, that's normally, um, that company is normal, because he's licensed by, and that's the company, is normally the only company that the city has.
Yes, Denmark.
He's got a big tough brand, too, so.
I don't care, I was just suggesting.
Well, there's another, there's another, well, there is another, um, all day tree service, so I was, they, they do also this off business, but I, it's usually there, who's the chief is there?
Okay, all right, Ms. Wade, text that to him, all right. All right, to the, to the business partners, uh, budget talk, Ms. Wade, we need to go in those talks, put them together, some days, some times, for, to get with me.
And I, I would bring, I think you all may have voted on the budget process, um, and I bring a copy back of what we have for you all tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, Dick is through, you guys have a council now here, Councilwoman Yeller?
Uh, yes, I respectfully request reimbursement for, um, it needs to be like.
Council, I mean, Councilwoman Wade, Ms. Wade, that's what we want to send them to.
Right.
Okay, email. That's what we take care of, so.
Councilwoman Yeller.
Oh, oh, it's up, rough about a thousand, a little over a thousand.
But we don't put it in the settlement. Okay, please, uh, Councilwoman Yeller?
Yeah, um, be, uh, be on the, I got about three, sorry. All right, number one, uh, on the contracts, the contracts, uh, state that if we have, that power must have police officer, and I want to have, it could be a police officer, or a sheriff, but.
So you say eight one?
Yeah, eight one.
You got room for that, so I'm happy with that.
So that's part of the.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, but, but, uh, Terry says, oh, it's a police officer.
No, it's for.
They post certified.
They show, we, we can't share, because she wanted to.
Yeah.
I will. Well.
I mean, what, I didn't put you in crime?
Put it, put it right to.
I mean, that's an illegal state trooper student.
Yeah.
And an eight over certified?
Yeah.
Law enforcement.
Okay, and the next thing is, uh, all right, when we come and ready the bill, um, they was told that we only have eight hours in the bill, and we gonna come in and pride day, to decorate, that's part of our eight hours. But remind you, nobody's cleaning up convention, so we had to come in and clean for four hours, so, because it was so nasty, so, um, you might wanna, uh, uh, set aside cleaning up time and preparation, uh, for a party, so can you, uh?
Start with the coast?
No, no, they said they only get eight hours, you get eight hours, you coming in to clean up, or, uh, decorate that for your air.
No, but see, then I say something, I asked the first contract, because I, I, I have, just see, we changed it, we just, we just changed, uh, uh, things in, in the policy. You know, we, we did something, and what Ms. Terry has realized by now, by not having, they're not, they're not the one that gonna have to clean up, they're not the one that gonna have to do anything. And you're bringing people in, and, uh, we need to do a little adjustment, since she strictly go by what on the paper. So, uh, I think that, um, we need to go back and do a little adjustment with the time.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I think it's important, you know, uh, since people gotta come clean up.
That should be some allotted time for that.
All you can do is amend it.
Amend it four hours.
So too, if we amend that, I, I want to do it tomorrow. Because some people have, think that, when they, they gonna run into the same problem. She said, the only people that can do it is the people that, uh, being married, being wed, and such, we let it prove.
That is so much.
To approve, to amend, the, the.
Set up a breakdown for me.
Um, we have a committee, Andrew and, and he's doing a show, I mean, not the show, uh, Johnson.
Well, you can put it on the set, just tell him.
No, he wanted to go ahead on, because he said he forgot.
I mean, okay, tell me what gets consent, what you want to put on the set?
He got four, he's on one.
What's about, how you want me to work? No, no, that's, yeah.
Allow, allow them to have four hours pride, as long as it's, they can do that as soon as eight hours.
And as long as it's during the city's open time, until four thirty, and at four thirty.
Yeah. Doing, doing, knowing the city hours.
Right, it used to be.
Yeah, I don't think anybody, they reminded that the council is in charge of the building.
Yeah, Terry paid, she worked with the mayor, and she had to be with the mayor.
Well, the mayor started.
We're the we are, so we can.
Okay. Hold on, I got one more.
Bless your heart, Johnny, bless your hearts, I want you to say.
Well, he was under the.
That's good night.
All right, I'm going. And, uh, also, uh, we kind of had a little technical difficulty, one technical difficulty. I used my one free round, all council give one free round.
I ain't never used it.
Yeah, y'all only gotta do is y'all give me.
I got some armors, I just, if I were one that need yours.
But anyway, I used my one free round for my class of juniors, um, but one of my classes, they, they, uh, came to pay the two hundred, two hundred fifty dollar, uh, fee to use the building. And so, so they, so they can't get the money back. So the only way they can get the money back is the council had to go pay them to get the money back, it's two hundred fifty dollars, because I used my one free round, so. So put down, consider, they had to pay Selma High School class in nineteen eighty-four, they, uh, two hundred fifty dollars back. But Terry said she couldn't do it, she said, had to come in for the council.
That goes for the council, I mean, who cares?
What, what chain of credit line?
We just said to repay two hundred fifty dollars.
What chain of credit line?
Chinese?
Chinese. What are they? Karen, Karen, Chris.
Oh, Karen.
Karen, Chris.
Ninety-four million.
Yeah, two hundred fifty dollars. You know, I wanna thank Councilwoman Ben for dropping by and sit over the player in nineteen eighty-four. See, we got some young folks, we ain't old enough to like nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-seven degrees. Young folks, they got eighty-four.
No, what happened was, I was passing by the convent, and that's like, or sobbing, and said, stop, get out of your car. And I did. You had, you had bits, and like, they was, y'all look like y'all had footprints.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna tell you something else, the rest, you know, we, we started something at our player, I hope everybody else attended the rest of the play. If, if someone said they couldn't afford to come, we didn't turn anybody around. Because a lot of people, they might not have money to do what they do, I ain't going in that mess, they ain't never been, they, they too embarrassed, I don't have money. So we say, hey, you got, come on, you know, so that's what we, that's what.
Council, anything else, Council?
Yes, yes, and, uh, uh, my lady, the, the captain, I think it been, uh, so, uh.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Thomas?
Y'all have one to talk about, and this, no, I'm talking about all my little stuff. I took it, it's the one I'm, I'm worried about. Uh, I asked, uh, you supposed to have got, you let the, the, the attorney got away, somebody may get across the, uh, you said that, uh, remember I told you about Jerry Pete, to ask him about the Dallas Academy Building? That's why it's important that, uh, about our city buildings, that we be able to go and see what's going on. Now, Lady Love, or Love Lady, just got through construction site, just got, which one is it?
Love Lady.
Love Lady.
I said Love Lady.
Well, the contractor, anyway, that's why, the contractor just got through with this Dallas Academy Building. There are two things that. There are two things that bother me. Mr. Pete came to our work session the last time, he told us that the building was ready to, for everybody to go in. Am I right, council? And he said the keys were, they had to get them from the? The, the, whoever, the ma, uh, uh, get the keys to go in, okay? But what done happen is, uh, right before the building got brought down, y'all remember when Candy said the air condition were taken out of there? Now, I wanna know, did the insurance, uh? Did they pay for the air condition? They didn't? Why?
How, how, how far did you went, went to go with it?
Well, I haven't got nothing, you just not give it to me.
What'd he say?
And my phone went dead, I can't read what you got. Ain't nothing I can see. I can't see nothing. There. Oh, there it is, right? I think this is it. Well, anyway, uh, you know, uh, they didn't finish the floor inside of the Dallas Academy Building. Uh, I don't know who did, but I was told that Van Dyker did the walkthrough. Now, I thought that, uh, we made the statement that, uh, whenever they got to with the, with the Dallas Academy Building, that, uh, we wanted to make sure that it was completed. You remember we issued dissent? But nobody never did respond. See, this is what done happen.
That was all time.
Yeah. And this is why we say, uh, we ask, we give you stuff to relate to them, and they're not related to us.
Don't you want me to put a third date to the end?
I, no, I don't want you to put anything to the end. No, no, uh, they can say you ain't sent it to them. And when you, when you front them about it, they gonna say, well, Cory ain't sent us nothing. Uh, we didn't receive it. So now, we gotta find out, uh, with the con, with the, what y'all call it, Lady?
Love Lady.
Love Lady.
I love the ladies.
We gotta find out, is Love Lady, and why they didn't finish the floor. Cause everything been signed off on.
That's the question.
And then we need to know, uh, what happened, the reason why they, they didn't pay for the, the kids, they couldn't go in.
Now, what, from what I recall, that, that the last meeting that we had, Councilwoman Tom, was that they were separate incidents. Right. And so, they, they could not, um, the contractors, Love Lady, uh, was there to, for the fire only. And so they should have had something, just like with our Smithman Building, there were two separate incidents.
Yeah, but she did put in.
Two separate claims.
She did put in, she did put the claim in for the first time.
Prior, prior, prior. I, I don't, I don't, I don't doubt that, what I'm, what I'm saying is that we're gonna have to follow up on that claim. I don't know if they, you know, they just got the money.
Okay, well.
You know what we do.
I got your message. Now, I agree.
Yeah, I'm just saying now, I think that, that this takes her a longer than that.
That's what I'm saying, that's why, and then I asked the clerk, I did my follow-up, President Boyd, President Boyd, I did a follow-up before, when Ms. Candy had told me about it. And this is why I said we need to been looked in there before, before we let these people got away. Uh, I did, I went to the clerk and I asked the clerk about the claim that Miss, she had filed, but the air condition didn't take it. Now, I think Ms. I was in the, in the middle of a trap position, just being honest with you.
The best thing in the property, you're there in the system, straight to Mary Pete, and ask for the check. And they should have covered, and the check was cash, who signed?
That's right, cause something going on.
They dated work and everything. I would just suggest you work it out, I reckon.
Okay. Yeah, I want, that's what I need to give, cause, uh, that's why they can't, the children couldn't go in the building. Did, in, uh, in July, you got another session coming up, and then the floors are not, they're not, the, the floors are not finished. And you done paid these people all this money, and they done went on about their business, they gotta come back.
My suggestion, because I know it's out of time, you say you can be here, but you can be here, because it's out of time. You go down to the third or the five, and quiet about that, and then you get your copy.
Uh, now I'm gonna give you another report on, the other building is going fine, and, and I hope the burglar can't get this, cut these out of. They are very secure, uh, down there, they put the cages over, uh, the, at the Smithman Building, they, they, they destroyed every, every unit that they had down there. So, right now, it looks good, I don't know how long, you never, you can't stop a thief with, right now, with you. Yeah. But right now, they, he got it secured real good, he got, he got it done. But I don't know the other stuff that he's finishing up, we'll be able to, if somebody takes up this time, should be able to see.
I took a check on that check.
I am, cause somebody gonna catch that money.
Forty, I think it was about forty.
I wanna know who it is. I'm sure it is, I'm gonna try, come Ms. I, they got Ms. I in the crossfire.
That's why I say, it's best, you know, he's our insurance, it's just.
Yeah.
Go to the source.
Well, I'm going to him, when he get back in town.
All right.
That's it, that's all about it.
Councilwoman, Jackson, we got, I'm gonna have you.
We, I forgot about.
Councilwoman.
Boom, the flat rate.
Oh, oh, flat rate, go ahead, go ahead.
And we need to talk about this too, they don't write me business, because we have a, the empowerment, we have a big, each, we have a big event, it's coming to the city, and it's wonderful that they have. But they wanted to give us a flat rate for the, uh, Evans Building, well, John Show, he's coming here. Flat rate for the, uh, the Evans Building in the amphitheater, they are, uh, they wanted to give us two thousand dollars. We left my bonus.
We dropped three grand to rent that thing, we said, so, I mean.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we do events all the time, so, I mean, I appreciate that, but I mean, can we really start doing flat rates for folk?
Yeah, we dropped three grand, why?
Yeah, we, we had to rent that thing before we spent.
It's fifteen twenty-nine.
I know, we had to get all that stuff, we had to get another part of it, inspecting what, uh, our.
What you ready to eat? Yeah, put some extra money into it?
Yeah, to get everything else in it.
Oh, yeah, I would buy it.
Fencing.
Oh, yeah, they gonna do that too.
They got all, they be doing their own stuff.
So what, two thousand, two thousand?
Well, he, well, they saying he, they wanted the amphitheater in, in, uh, Massacre County. Well, they all put the flat rate of three thou, I missed it, two thousand dollars, you got me saying three.
Including them paying separately, uh, all security and all those things.
They paying for everything.
All those things I named last week, I don't have my.
They paying all for everything else they need.
Seven years. I can't see.
And, and can you, uh, find out too, with the, you know, we don't like the last minute and stuff, you know, the mayor has to, has to sign.
That parade.
On that parade, um, what do you know about that with Mr. Fitz? Cause you know, it, it, it gotta go to the mayor.
Yeah, I know.
And we don't need to wait till.
I, I think Fitz come back to work on tomorrow.
Can you, see, can he, uh, you know, even though he gonna throw it back out the door, but you, you can, uh, we need to get it to go there first.
So, what we just need to go on a flat rate for two thousand more?
That's for the, that's for the.
That's for the, uh. Uh, they do, they're using their, uh, for the, uh, here you call, if you see what all the bits they have, what they have on that.
You know, one of their workshops.
We open up that old apartment. As much as I want to support this, you gotta be fair to everybody. I understand what they're running the town, but the city must operate on their policies that they have to conduct. You still, you still a penny to lose for one or not the other, and there's some things that are funny, but not right. So once again, you know, I, I don't know if you, you even ask us for it at this time. And if they, and if they, and if they, and if they.
They did.
I don't recall, they're what, uh, we, they did? But I, I know that they was here making a presentation, but I don't recall them asking for a break in in the uses of facilities of the city, I really.
Well, we've been to, we have two camps.
I'm not saying that they didn't do it, I just don't recall. I, I really do, I support it, I, I love it, I'm looking down the road, want to score it, for the one or not the other, it just not.
Mr. President, can I speak? Uh, you know, our councils, uh, you have council people, we have a, we have eight, eight councils and one president. A lot of things that comes into Selma that, uh, so my council don't even step, don't even be a part of. And, uh, we've been going to meetings, every meeting that they have had, and some of our citizens have been there at the meetings. That, uh, that are being part of this, and, uh. If, I think that if, if it's gonna be a problem with this, uh, we would take it back. And we would, we would address this to them. They have four, five, and six, that's three days here. And they'll have different times of what, what they're doing, from the George Evans Building, um, they, they have a parade, they be doing stuff like having health, uh, uh, fairs and stuff, different little organizations showing about.
And let me ask you a question, they need to talk about, you know?
Yes, they doing everything.
They done beautified before the event, they done beautified Water Avenue.
That's right. And, and then another thing I wanna ask you too, can you vote, can we vote tomorrow for them to put their, their flags up?
Yeah.
You need to wrap it up, that's.
What, what, what?
Wrap it up, that's.
Anthony, Jimmy, I'll just put the flags up too.
Well, they gonna put them up and take them down.
There we go. There we go.
That's right, I don't know about you, but saying council should.
No, we not doing that.
Oh, make it clear, I support it. I just wanna make it clear that this council, they gonna grant it, grant it for everybody to come and ask us for it and accept it, that's all, that's all I'm saying. That's what we need to do, because it can't do for one and not the other.
If they gonna put everything in, like.
Can I finish, because I, me and Andrew, we been pressing, none of the other councils are doing a part.
Uh, well, it, it does matter, it matters a lot, it might not matter to you. See, cause every time we do something, there's always be an argument or vigor, somebody comes back with something. And when they forget, sometimes some of these other people, council people sit up here, they be a dead stuff, and they ain't ready to find that, okay? So let me talk. If the shoe fit me well.
Find it in front of the war.
Uh, we have, we brought this, we brought this to you tonight. Now, if you disagree.
Let's just go for up or down.
Up or down, then we go, we'll go back to them and tell them.
Because I seen them vote down tomorrow, that's gonna be the last meeting before them, before them.
Well, can I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we have the pol, we have, we got the policy for the, now, I got the policy for the, the, the buildings. And we go back to them, because I, and he's not, because he might have that attitude, we got some other people standing up with that attitude too. So, uh, I want people to, uh, Carl, I'm, I, I, you're negative, so I quit, let me finish.
Oh, okay, I don't have knowledge or any skills or any.
Paul, let me.
Negative, just negative.
Go ahead, council.
You know what, I'm gonna leave this alone, because, you know, when you bring stuff before us, we don't even make comments, we don't say anything. And you sits up here and.
I do, girl.
Yeah, you, you, you rule, you rule.
I do.
All right, Councilwoman.
You, you gonna leave it alone, I'm gonna pick it up.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it alone, Carl, I, 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 I'm not finna lose my respect for him and, and his power, because.
Come on, come on.
Cause some people think they don't want to see themselves.
I wanna go to, since you're gonna leave it on the scale, uh, Thursday, July fourth, um, there is a military walk. So this is not three days of duty in amphitheater, there is a military walk at the Emmett Tep Pettis Parade for the military. And I can't read the small print under there, I promise y'all, I can't, I can't see it, work for nothing. My eyes and all that, under that military walk, it says something else, okay?
This is a military walk on the bridge in Selma to officially celebrate.
Thank you. Okay, and as official, uh, festival kickoff, Councilwoman.
Beginning of the empowerment, super loud music, fade, and music.
Okay, and then at eleven, there's a financial literacy and entrepreneurship expo. That's at the convention center, that they have the paper too. Health, beauty, and wellness expo, and then the music showcase, and then there's, then there's the rear front, uh, rear front, uh, amphitheater at six thirty. On Friday, uh, there's a music showcase at Songs of Selma Park. On Saturday, there's an empowerment music festival parade, I guess that's, uh, in the Battle of the Bands, and a car show, uh, there's an announcement of the winner. There's an art walk at ten AM on Water Avenue, and food, food trucks and all those good things. There's a movie, The Lion King, uh, and then there's a second movie, Sing. There's a third movie, so I, I guess this is a movie festival they're paying for. There's a third movie, put you, it looks like it says burning. And there's a fourth movie called Cars for our people, uh, so, there, it's not the amphitheater that they use for three days straight, this is an empowerment festival. Uh, they're going to cleanup Water Avenue, they're going to enhance it in that area over there, they're gonna pay all of the cleanup crews. They have set aside thousands of dollars for our unemployed, from the, uh, that's the one thing we forgot to say, Councilwoman. Uh, they set aside thousands of dollars for Michael Johnson himself, NFL Michael Johnson, that is. Uh, have set aside thousands of dollars for the cleanup crew for public works. Those who are willing to come, they have, they may have run out of their, um, what do you try to say, unemployment, they may have run, whatever. They've set that money aside for the cleanup crew, that those are the only people that they wish to pay, are those city employees that have been affected by this. And so, I like this, I'm, I'm with it, uh, and I'm not saying that Councilwoman is short either, but I wanted to, uh, run this down for everybody listening.
I'm gonna vote for, specifically, we get assigned consideration to end that.
We do.
And that's all, that's all.
Let me ask you a question, when they came before us last time, did they ask for seven month, I mean, did we, did they?
Uh, you, 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 uh, we assigned, uh, uh, Councilwoman, to negotiate the amount, when they came in, they said, um, um, can we, instead of paying for everything separately, can we do it just in one check from the foundation?
What is the one, two thousand dollars? What, what'd you ask, two thousand?
Well, no, that's what.
And all the other parks are free.
Right, I was, I was just about to say, they, okay, you got three hundred, they paying for it. They three hundred dollars for the Evans building on the Thursday, unless it's gonna, it's gonna, but that's what I paid you.
Yeah.
On the Thursday for our, for our event, on Thursday, so that's three hundred dollars, and the, um, car morning was like two fifty, three hundred.
Somewhere over there.
And then it's fifteen hundred, I mean, we maybe giving them a thousand dollars, because the Phoenix park.
It's, it's, it's less than, I can't, but they just wanna pay one check.
They just wanna give you one check.
How much, how much?
They said two thousand dollars, that's what they, they, they said two thousand.
They may be paying us just a dollar.
They just put that on the.
They asked me.
And move forward.
And they beautify it.
Okay, two thousand dollars move forward, okay.
Yeah, that's all they ask.
So just to clarify, the language is not necessarily correct, it's not really, it's a flat rate, but it's not giving them any discounts.
Right, they wanna pay, they wanna pay one check.
Right, right, they're checking to pay the rates, but not, they're not asking for any special consideration.
No, they ask.
Boring the cost of.
They gonna clean up for us.
Can be misconstrued for the conversation, so it's a flat rate for one check.
Probably would've put that on there, I told you.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, just clarify.
Well, wait a minute.
If you talking about the.
Amphitheater, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred now.
Three hundred for.
How many days, how many days an amphitheater?
It's only one day, one day.
And I think the Evans is about six hundred?
Uh-uh, it's only for Thursday, so that's three hundred.
Three hundred? That's eighteen hundred dollars.
And that's, the convention center was, I think, two fifty, last time I rented.
And then they go to Songs of Selma Park.
So that's.
Songs of Selma's free, and Phoenix's free.
Oh, they're free.
They got permission.
They got permission, they would come in.
They pray that two thousand.
Right, I'm gonna say, that's what I was saying, after you said it, I was like.
They just wanna pay one check rather than run around.
Okay, that's why I have two thousand.
Problem with that, the problem is they are paying in full, the amount, and we're not getting those special considerations.
They got to pay.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Councilwoman. Go ahead, council.
And President Boyd, and, and I'm, uh, uh, when we do stuff, we try to do ahead of time, we don't like these people to be at the last minute. Cause we volunteering our time with this going out, uh, for that parade, we need, don't, don't, please ask Mr. Fitz. He needs to go ahead if he's gonna sign it, so we can get it to the mayor office, cause the day is, tomorrow be.
No, I took it, he already signed.
No, he hasn't signed it yet.
I, I, I think that may be the only thing they're maybe asking for a concession for, they're gonna have a military walk. That's our only independent state, that's a parade we need to give them a concession. That's our only independent state, that's a parade we need to give them a concession.
And then they said that, also, they told Mike.
David, David.
You know, Mike, Mike said, they said they would pay for whatever officer they asked to use or whatever.
But, just, just, let me make something out of that. We should not be attacked by Congress. We should not attack each other because there are differences. What I'm experiencing up here, I never experienced this attack. In my Congress, when I had a difference of a real big opinion, I've always stayed in my position, but I never personally attacked him. And I take the subject as one check when I have a difference.
Councilwoman, best we go to your place about it. So let me, tell me the truth about it.
It's my fan, my Jennifer was my fan. I dropped it, I got it. Made a fan out of it. Okay, uh, I'm gonna go backwards and then forwards. One hot summer, the next hot, uh, the next meeting in the district is what you all just discussed, is the empowerment zone. Uh, and then councilman, run by left already, and, and right after that is the ten o'clock praise, because he has a drill, we have to reschedule that. Um, going back, of course, the next item is Jazz on the Grass, I wanna thank all of you all who participated. Uh, all of the sponsors, uh, that made it to the banner. Uh, Spire, formerly known as Alagasco, Symmetry, uh, Med Spa, Platinum, Platinum sponsor. TME, total management, uh, experts, uh, hog engineering, Sematimes Journal as our newcomer, and they will be back and returning. Uh, council, council, uh, President Boe, if you had not stepped in as a sponsor for, uh, certain equipment, uh, Mr. President, you would not have had it, um, if I told you all the things, uh, all the stumbling blocks and all the brick walls, it would take all that, and then you all would not believe it, because it's too simple. It's, it's simple and it's childish, um, so I'll tell you about the success of Jazz on the Grass. It was phenomenal. Um, citizens are calling now, and I'm sorry that Ms. Wade is getting a phone call, and perhaps she's getting a phone call because she was right in the midst of it, or they can't get us on this, uh, full message thing in here, our messages are full, but they wanna know when the next one is. When are you gonna do another Jazz on the Grass? It's a lot of workout, it's a lot of work. And to contend with someone in charge, to contend with the head person in charge, it gives you more work. It gives you more labor, it gives you, uh, it's just, uh, wasted energy that you should not have to contend with. So it's a, a whole lot of work, it was a lot of work then, but it's extra work now. Uh, you know, crews were sent home, they were supposed to help. Uh, stage didn't be found. Ten.
Bleachers.
It's great.
What, what? Gates locked?
Gates, not just locked, double locked. Gate, uh, the, the gate that belongs to, uh, St. James Hotel. Uh, yes, and I didn't, Ms. Lewis, it was so, so wonderful that Mr. Lewis said that we could use it. He was like, of course, use it, use it. But then somebody didn't just lock it, they double locked it. Uh, so that Lane Bracken couldn't get in, Lane Bracken calls me and said, hey, y'all never locked me out before. And, uh, like, uh, Lane, uh, I don't know what to say, but I'll just come around there and cut the chain right quick. If I have to, I'll just cut the chain and get somebody else to cut the chain. We'll get in there, Lane, and we'll, that way we can buy it if it's necessary. But a beautiful stage, Lane brought, uh, thank you, Lane, beautiful stage, Lane brought around. Uh, you know, we didn't have the city stage, cause no one could find it. It was a beautiful stage, Lane Bracken, that came around, and wonderful, wonderful tents, uh, that came around. So we are thankful for that. Uh, the bleachers were left outside at the recreation department, somebody forgot to put the bleachers up, some went ahead and got those, uh, since they were outside on the sidewalk. We just brought along over, uh, city property. We just brought along over so that we can use it, but it was so successful. Uh, and people wanted back, but it's a whole lot of work. If I had more hands, I might do it twice a year. But it, uh, everybody's talking about it. And, and I just can't thank the citizens enough and the sponsors enough for making it all happen. Because every year, somebody stepped their game up to try to stop that, that one right there, Jazz on the Grass, AKA party. Uh, the other thing, they can't piss me off, I need something to add.
I just wanna tell you, I thought that it was sure the beautiful beauty, but that blue was something awesome. I'm ready to see, I'm ready to see how you're gonna top yourself in this.
Every year, people tell me.
It's gold, and then the.
Purple?
The half pink purple look, and I, but this blue has caught me off guard.
Every year, everybody says, this is the best color, so, hey, props to the arts team, yes sir.
I hear you, you wanna talk something serious, wait. Is anyone out there?
Oh, no, I haven't gone to the meetings, have you gone?
I haven't, every time they have, I have.
I had a conflict too.
Sam.
Have you run out, have you gone to the awakening, uh?
No, no, I haven't, I haven't.
Okay, it's new, you know where they are. Cause we're supposed to partner with them. Okay, cause we're, we're supposed to partner with them for, uh, where they were last year.
I, I'll call the media.
And that feels like an add-on on, on the calendar, so just go ahead and consume it. Uh, and then next, after that is, I let y'all bring it, she put it, okay? Uh, special event, run a request, okay, so this is proper to me, and I don't know, uh, somebody said that they want to have like a massive amount of an event over at, um, pay for the sta-, they wanna pay for the stadium, they wanna pay for the use of the, uh, tennis court as their VIP section. They wanna pay for, uh, the, the big, uh, park out there. And I said, we've never done that before, I don't, I don't even know whether to close it out. So, uh, councilwoman, I briefly told you about it, and they want to know, they were like, set the fee and we'll pay it, we don't care what the fee is, set the fee and we'll pay the fee. But we want to use, uh, we want to use this area. So that's just something I'm dropping on y'all, that was dropped on me, so y'all can be thinking about it. A bonus, a bonus.
Tennis courts can't be used for, they're tennis courts, they can't be used for entertaining, that's a, that hurt the poor.
Yeah, not for enter-, yeah, not for entertaining, but you might wanna play too.
If you wanna play tennis, not, you said VIP area, I thought you said, so I was thinking, how is, we do this VIP tennis area, that'd be great.
So. I think so, I think so. And so, I don't have a full proposal, what I'm just dropping that, so y'all, y'all hear it again, it'll, it'll come to, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, and because she was, um, she, she had a medical reason because she couldn't be here, but it's gonna be, I told her the best route is to go is committee, committee makes a recommendation, there's discussion, and then national labor.
And who's first reaction?
My, my.
Uh, next year. So, uh, and y'all, that's, that's, that's misopinion, yeah, yeah, you got time to figure this one out. And then finally, uh, y'all heard the question I already asked, concerning chief, uh, chief police. So, um, so council got together, and I guess we, uh, we appointed an interim chief, uh, Captain Kane, and, um, he's appointed, right?
He's appointed.
So the council gonna be, oh, he's appointed, right?
He's at, that's, uh-huh.
He just.
He, yeah.
Until July thirty.
Okay, until July thirty, and, and who, who appointed him?
Well, I guess basically, he's more on the line, like.
Tell me, cause I don't know.
He probably, when he wasn't there, he had a captain, uh, Captain Kane. He left, people reported Captain Kane and lieutenant folks going to town, so I guess they still feel.
They need to go for.
Yeah.
So, Captain is retired, it's Captain, Captain.
It's not lieutenant before.
Okay, we're not gonna get up to some.
Captain, Captain.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Y'all have something about my topic?
Say Captain King was the one that was introduced, uh.
At the weed seed.
At the weed seed to be the interim, you know, just to fill in until the chief got back, or in this case now, he's retired. So retired July thirtieth would be, be able to add their own appointment, uh, Kane, based on, you know. The, the chief tagged him to fill in for him, cause he's just basically on leave.
No, he wasn't appointed.
No, he just picked him, so to speak.
He said, he's the ass of the shit.
Okay, so, moving right on here. Uh, I'm sorry, you have something to my topic.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the whole situation. Do y'all know if I was, what's your, what's your argument? If I was to make feeling, I, I know y'all. Cause y'all, y'all, we setting our set up, cause cheap. Let it go, let it fail, let it fail, let it fail. You know when them three officers got indicted, first thing they said, they was spending what I paid? So, uh, our police chief got arrested. We ain't talking about that, about spending that pay. I know we, I know, I, y'all was sitting there and said, suck that kid, cause we, we lie, them guy, I love y'all, they mobbed the intern. I'm telling you.
That's what I'm, you're not bringing to the fur for, councilman, right there. Don't mean you're not doing it.
Well, you, well, they, they, them guys are nearly, they just spinning them right in there the same day.
We should have executives.
I'm talking about the three police officers, nah, I ain't talking. But, but still, they just telling them guys, soon they got it back, boom, cutting the checks off, y'all ain't getting paid no more, it's fine. So, you know.
And so, uh, it's the same topic, oh, okay, and so, um, tomorrow. Tomorrow on the floor, tomorrow on the floor, there's gonna be a motion for interim, uh, police chief. And so, are we ready for that motion tomorrow, Mr. President?
Yes, we just gotta, we have a report from the public safety committee.
Y'all are bringing a recommendation for the council, okay, so ultimately.
I was sending, I was sending a text, um.
Okay, and, and ultimately, that is a vote of the council?
Yes ma'am.
There's an appointment of the council, and so I just wanted to make sure that tomorrow, there is a motion.
And I'll, and also too, with the budget here, that we can talk about doing a public safety committee, that we need an, an assistant chief back to the board.
And a co.
And a co.
Oh, what, what?
And co.
You know, oh, okay.
What we been talking about, like the bird?
We need a assistant chief. When you have two, you're like you got count. We need a assistant chief, raise your money.
Count, when you got something for me?
Yes, but, um.
The part on the chief of police, and I was, I wanted to be at the public safety committee, not really, we didn't see here, but, um, court prevented me from coming at three P M to setting it up after four thirty. But, um, so I would love to get the recommendation, um, maybe I can give you a copy, and I'll review this evening. But, um, what I wanted to suggest is that we get a copy of the assessment, that we paid so much money for. Um, I've been trying to go read some part of the assessment.
Doctor, I own just another one that they just found. Superior.
The paid security company.
Paid, yeah, paid security company.
I need the copy of that.
You got a copy?
I'll get a copy.
Okay, give me a copy.
Oh, I'd like that a copy too.
All right, cause I, from what I've heard, from what I've heard, uh, we should get a copy from Denver.
No, no, no.
But I, I really don't think that that's gonna have any deterrence, but, uh, I mean, I'd like to see it too.
I would, I would like to, um, look at it, because of what I, what I, um, been born, and probably been, and a whole lot of it. If it holds true, the things that, if ten percent of the things that we discuss with me are actually true, that are a whole lot there from a whole lot of people that are already there in that department, that, um.
Thirty percent.
Um, and so, I think that, um, I know I would like to read that, in understanding of the challenges that they would face prior to this administration, because we know that it has only worsened, um, since that time.
Can I make a copy of the, we get somebody to make a copy?
Well, I, I was told that they gave several copies to the, the mayor's office to, you know.
To give to us.
He gave us.
Sorry, I don't like going out.
He got, yeah, so if, so if, um, if we can get a copy of that assessment, I, I'd like to read over.
Yeah, I'm like.
Hey, that's all, that's all.
I'm, I'm, I'm not a law enforcement, um, person, but, um, I can understand what I read, I can, I can come on in, and so, that, you know, I've been told that there's some recommendations. Whether we follow them or not, at least we can identify some of the issues, um, that were addressed then, and some of the recommendations that were never followed. Um, and CJ, you see what you can come up with, and then see if we can address, um, some of those things going forward. We seem, um, to ensure that we have some type of plan and performance measure for the, the chief going forward. Um, that we put into place, that there's some expectations that they, they, um, that we have of it. Um, I've heard that one of the things that they had in there is that, um, whoever we appoint should have a third, sixth, and ninth day evaluation. Um, that they should be screen drugs free at the time of, of the board.
Yes, I think you got it.
Things of, things of that sort, um, and so, those are some recommendations I'd like to see, and I would like to see, just seeing as though we have the order now, that's like, some of this is being followed, maybe the commission can put it in place, um, the public safety commission.
But one thing, what we're talking about is the men of health. And that's what the men of health are, and also, now, I think it'd be a good act here too, to get them out to our own.
That's one.
That's one, I mean, compare both of them.
We get the bars and push them on.
Yeah. Let's, let's get.
And so, Mr. President, I would love to see, uh, your committee's recommendation report tomorrow, before a motion is placed. Right. I would like to see that recommendation, uh, before, uh, we get up here and say, is there a motion? I would like to see that, uh, this person that we put in place, we have to be very, very careful. There are some things we need to look at across the board. Uh, number one, the person needs to live here.
Yes.
Um, that's, that's simple. The person needs to live here. And so, there's some things we need to look at across the board, we have all the impossible, some things, and so, and I'm sure y'all discussed it, and I hate I missed the.
We just gonna call them, we just gonna call them names, I guess.
So I wanna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, and, and there are a lot of district committees been working over time, cause I had heard about three or four different things that we're, that we're supposed to be doing. I, I can't wait to tell you one of them that I've heard, I cannot wait to tell you.
I will have the chief?
No, that's not it, but I can't wait to tell you when you're gonna die, I can just, but not quite out with it. But this, there have been several things mentioned, and also, given that we are going to be discussing people, we're going to be discussing name and character. Could I probably, that we have an early special panel meeting going to executive session, you know, to talk about this before the regular meeting? Before we do that, because I think that this probably needs to be hashed out.
What we, what we probably do is, uh, the members, we don't have any citizens tomorrow, call me, or, and then just go and go to executive session, and then, it's not much we, we have to cover tomorrow. Majority is gonna go to the center, so, I can recall, we got to get, uh, Councilwoman Jackson out here, I told her, you know, give it about forty-five minutes to get out of there.
I'll be.
I know what.
President, when we go, I'm trying to really get deal advice about our executive session, council. We tell them personnel, and so go back next week, uh, we need to discuss the coverage. The version is really terrible, who are you talking about? Who are you, who are you?
Anything else, councilwoman?
That was a nice segue from Councilwoman Youngblood into my final, uh, topic. And this is, um, properly communicating, uh, when we, we could possibly have emergencies and legal matters. So Councilwoman Youngblood just said that, you know, she just heard there are so many things we're supposed to be doing, and all those council things, well, we, we all do, and then, but when we hear something that was, that's going to happen, uh, without council, and then it does happen, we hear stuff on the street, and then it does happen. And we were not privy to it at all, uh, that is a breakdown to me of properly communicating on issues that we need to properly communicate. Oh, it's one thing, you know, people, they're gonna get out, and they're gonna be, yeah, 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 and it's not the truth. But when you see it work itself out exactly, exactly how they explained it to you, that's gonna work out according to the council, then you are bewildered. I am bewildered, and I am saying, how did we miss this in the council, this, this didn't happen? And I'm gonna give a for instance, uh, for instance, talking about this, uh, whole police chief appointment thing, uh, so, so, and this may be true or may not be true, that's why we're giving it an example, that there's a whole committee already chosen, or this committee has been chosen for this, and the, the chosen, did you hear that term?
I did.
Oh, and, and the chosen one has already been chosen, and all of those kinds of things, there's a five-member committee, all, all three to put together. Uh, not all of them, I know they said the president, the mayor, and, and three more, and three more people.
I tell you.
They heard that.
We heard.
Yeah.
I think they said that.
Well, hey, 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 hey. That won't be the first, won't be the last.
So what, this is what I'm saying, um, um, first, I'm saying it to the president, then I'm saying to the council, um, you have a lot to do. And it, it can become overwhelming, uh, from taking our calls, our calls meaning citizens coming in, well, it wasn't a school, man. Uh, from taking our calls to playing secretary for us. Uh, from taking our powers, our powers meaning citizens coming in, well, it wasn't a pool, man, uh, from taking our powers to playing secretary for us, to creating the, not just creating it, but having it typed up somewhere or someplace. It, it, that can become a whole lot, and we need to remedy that, as a council, we need to remedy that, so that we can have proper communications on, because your mind is flying in so many places, because you are liable to say, I need to delegate this to someone, and it might not be the some, someone that, that is, uh, beneficial, let's say beneficial. But we need to take some of this stuff off of the president's plate, uh, delegate some things, especially next page, he's already told us one time, that's not his area, that's not what he does. But everything comes to, directly to him, including people who are saying, do this, you need to do this, you need to form a committee. Y'all don't need to just get out and, and talk this out, y'all need to form a committee, all those things are coming at one time, and so, we have to take that part of responsibility, as he takes, as he takes the responsibility of presiding over these meetings. And so, that's, that's what I'm saying, so that we can properly communicate, we need to properly delegate duties.
I'm gonna say to my friend, you know, thank you, here, for all that you do. I can't, I can't recall, my real time, I called, and asked you to assist me, too. I just want to thank you, and, and I know, I know you come through a lot of hard, you know, but you're typically good with all of us, and we just kind of did this also.
I'll get it out of the coast. Come here, we'll get you right there. I, I appreciate you.
So, if we can think about, uh, taking some of this stuff off his plate, some of those things that we're good at doing, you know, some things we're just good at doing, uh, if we can do some of those things, I think, I think it comes to our, to our... Oh, that's true, that's true.
Took a call.
All right. The administrative committee is structured.
I'm here, what you mean, yes, sir, hello, I'm ready, what's up?
Yeah, all right, so, I think that's it, for having the ways.
I want to announce that the Southwest District of Alabama Baptist Association is in stealth, they're having a convention, they're gonna be starting day through Wednesday.
What do you mean?
Uh, they, uh, I, I assume they're having the, I think, avenue of this, of course.
I don't know, back in stealth.
They're gonna be kicking off tomorrow at 7:00, and all, after the council meeting, all those women's, uh, through 10:00.
You got an invitation for us?
Anniversary tomorrow.